Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order at a couple minutes late, 6:02 PM on this January the 10th. If you could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands alone nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in our.
And now a moment of silence as we think about those who have gone before us. Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Yep, so trustee Alter.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Sauer.
You.
Trustee Shedig.
Here.
Uh, trustee Ward is absent, deputy mayor Ryan.
Here.
And mayor Allen.
Present. Uh, and Megan gives her best. She has come down with food. So she did not want to give it all to us, which we appreciate, but she was very bummed to be here or not to be here. All right, so first off, just as a review, uh, when former police chief Tim Colnery retired, resigned effective the end of the calendar year, technically January 1st of 2024, the authority by village law fell on me to appoint the new officer in charge. So our sergeant John Hudson was officially appointed as officer in charge of the Hoozie Falls Police Department, also effective January 1st, 2024. So I just want to make sure that was on the record. And at this point, I am exceedingly glad to be able to take part in the officially hiring and swearing in of Stephen Surdam Jr. As we have done in the past, we had an interview process which former chief was involved in, Sergeant Hudson was involved in, deputy mayor Ryan, trustee Sauer, we're all there for that. They gave us our recommendation, full recommendation for Stephen. Um, and I will tell you, uh, a little bit on the selfish side, it is so awesome to have gotten to know and work with a student going up through high school as his band teacher. Fast forward many years later to the mayor being present for you to take your step into law enforcement, which is fantastic. I know since you've graduated, uh, you have taken your dedication to family and to emergency services seriously, and this is just a great spot for you, and I'm so ecstatic for you to be taking this first step. Uh, so, uh, for the consideration of the board, we have our official resolution hiring a part-time police officer for the Hoozie Falls Police Department. Do I need to read this whole thing? Great. All right. So basically, uh, we are going to be hiring, um, Stephen Surdam Jr. To start immediately, he will begin Session 7 Law Enforcement Academy administered by Albany County Sheriff's Department on February 12. We will gladly put him to work before that time comes. Uh, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Hoozie Falls in regular session until the convenience follows that this Board of Trustees does hereby appoint Stephen Surdam Jr., who resides at Lincoln Hill Road and Eagle Bridge Jr. to the position of part-time, uh, Eagle Bridge Jr. I don't know why I put that. Sorry, that's supposed to be newer. Because the position can be changed on the resolution. A part-time police officer in the Village of Hoozie Falls Police Department and hourly rate as set forth in the applicable collective bargaining agreement effective January 10th, 2024. We're gonna skip over all the other stuff because we know that, we've been over that. I'm assuming you're all okay with that? Okay, good. All right. Um, so I need someone to offer the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Yep, trustee Shedig.
Uh, recuse.
He refuses because he's, uh, his employment's connected to.
My bad, sorry. Yep. Uh, trustee O'Malley.
Yes, did it say in there that he wasn't a member of the union?
What's?
Or couldn't be?
What's that?
In the resolution, it said something about the union in there, correct?
It's the second bullet point in the further resolved or.
Uh. Right there. He becomes a union member at what point?
I believe you guys do it so that it's after completion of the academy.
Academy.
I would have to, it's subject to the collective bargaining agreement, but.
Oh, that's just, that's why I ask, because Dan said he was part of the union itself.
Oh.
I don't, if he hasn't gone to the academy yet, I don't think he would be answering to that one.
He is.
Well, what is his, is he on the payroll?
The way we've done it in the past is he's on the payroll, but he's not union until after the academy.
You're fine to recuse if you just want to.
Yeah, I hate it.
Just for, for point of reference, uh, his employment is with a union who also is, uh, does UPS EU work, which is our police union, so he tends to recuse himself from anything related to police-police-union business, so that's.
Yeah, I was just, I mean, it is, you know, just speaking in the abstract, it depends what your job title is, I think, really, but.
That's fine. All right, thank you.
Kevin's still not in both.
I like to yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, trustee Alter.
Yep.
Trustee Sauer.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Ward is absent, deputy mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And mayor Allen.
Absolutely, yes. All right, congratulations, Stephen Surdam. Would you like to be the official swearing-in? Do you have the page already marked?
Uh, nope. I don't.
Well, it's all the same.
Do you have the oath in it?
I have, it's, you want the printout, I have the printout.
I don't think I can move that off the top of my head.
Well, it's the same as that.
There you go. It will actually be this page right now.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's that right there.
Okay. Yeah, I just stuffed it in there somewhere.
Want to step up near the American flag? And if you guys want to, video or whatever, take pictures, feel free, but we'll do the official swearing-in right now. Oh, I can't take pictures. Here, I'll hold it for you. Oh, you got it?
Good. Raise your right hand, Stephen. Read after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Aye.
Aye, Stephen Surdam Jr.
I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New York State.
And the Constitution of New York State.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Uh, we're gonna take a brief pause so people can congratulate, take pictures. Absolutely, please do it, please, please.
John.
So we're gonna pause the meeting briefly so we can congratulate Stephen and feel free to take some pictures, so. All right. Yes.
Yes, on your general, I, general allowance is how we do it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Before I forget. Oh, thank you, thank you. Should be some interest then. Proud.
I guess.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all the family involved, EMS folks, all the things coming out, right?
It is? About, uh. Again, I get the new stewards, it's a big deal, but getting the police officer.
I don't know. They're pretty close in time.
This is 299. That's what the guest says.
How about you nine? Well, I mean, a guest took a 299.
Give it back to us.
Oh, thank you.
Just need your signature. Brad, when you go on, picture it. Come on up, please.
Where do I sign it right here?
I'm free to take pictures with anyone's phone.
There you go.
Come on over.
Congratulations, young man.
Whoever likes going, roll for it. Three, two, one. I got it.
If it goes, Justin, if you can move that way or that way, so.
There you go. Again, three, two, one. Got it? Who else like to hop in? You got a couple here? Three, two, one. I did.
Thanks.
Anybody else? In a minute, yeah, let's forget that.
We gotta figure out where to look.
There you go. Better off doing it that way.
Can I hop in this one right here? Anybody else?
I don't know.
How are you? Absolutely.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Like Jiminy Cricket.
That noise here.
You want to email or you want to text?
Oh, um, email them, please.
Congrats.
Bye, bye.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you. Take care.
Congrats, guys.
See you soon. See you, Amy.
Good seeing you.
Take care.
See you later. All right. Okay, we are going to move on with our meeting. Uh, so we're back, I guess, in session. Uh, all right, so we have, uh, here, uh, Charles Marshall, Chuck. Hi there, uh, from Stewart's Shop. He is going to discuss possible Stewart's Shop move and expansion into the, uh, in the village. And a request that Stewart's has made to the village board to modify the existing zone to extend, uh, commercial industrial zone. All right, Chuck, I have on the screen the letter, the, the, the sort of, um, CAD drawings that you had sent to us, so I have all that if you need it. I know you have your stuff as well.
I mean, so I'm actually a pretty straightforward, competitive, petty guy. I'll, uh, save the common circumstance. A little disappointed I didn't end up with the sergeant's coat, but. I'll deal with it.
Still time.
Probably end up with handcuffs, though, right? So, pretty straightforward, um.
I'll blow this up so we can see it a little bit better.
So the existing Stewart's is, as you, you guys know, you know, better than I do, but it's, it's at River and Church. Um, we've tried to expand that location a couple of times. Um, we have not gotten any responses back from the adjoining property owners. So we have, um, contracts in place with 129 and 131 Church. Um, my, my former colleague of mine did the original, um, deal, for lack of better terms, um, and was unaware that 131 Church does not have the same zoning as 129 Church. So all we're asking to do, um, is change the zoning for 131 Church, um, and that would allow us to proceed to the planning board. Um, the action would be, uh, the SEACER determination by this board. Anyone that's unfamiliar with SEACER, it's just a state environmental quality review. Um, you would basically say that the zone change and then the subsequent site plan that leads to the construction of the Stewart's um, does not have an environmental impact on the overall encompassing area. Um, the planning board would then adhere to your SEACER determination and provided there are no variances, which again, we haven't figured out if there are or aren't, um, we would be able to construct a new store after their approval. Um, but we think it's inappropriate at this time to proceed, um, just because the, the zoning is in two districts. Um, one of the things that the, the letter says, um, and I think it's, it's pretty critical and evident by the pictures there, is that your existing zoning, like if you look in that, that bottom, I don't want to, I don't want to point her, but, so.
Here, here, use the mouse. Want to use the mouse?
All right.
Okay. Or you can run.
But just, yeah. Basically, right here, all we're do, all we're looking to do is make this yellow portion blue, like here. Um, and we think that that's actually probably the original intent of the zone was to make the zone, you know, coherent, but the, um, you know, because it was a house, it didn't follow through. Um, and because 129 L's around like it does, um, and it's just an extension of the zone, we don't think it's an inappropriate request.
What's the purpose of taking 131?
Because we can't fit without.
The footprint behind it is, is a very big piece of property.
We can't fit without 129 and 131. We need both.
You can leave that over there because I have pictures of that. It may be better for, uh, people to be able to see this, but this is, uh, part of, of that document there.
Yeah, so the next page.
That is the overview.
Right, so.
This is 22 over here.
Right, and this is, so this is 131 right here. So even though 129 L's around it, 131 is where the driveway is.
Have you talked to the neighbors at 131?
I, I haven't talked to anybody, um, to be honest with you, because I wasn't sure of the, the process. I, um, sent the request in, in December. Um, I don't have a, a problem with knocking on doors and the such, but I, I wasn't, I didn't want to create a stir, um, without knowing like what was, what was involved, but I don't have a problem, you know, knocking on the doors.
So the entrance would be at 131?
The driveway, yes.
I think you'll find a problem at that location because when trains are coming, traffic gets backed up almost back into the area, so, and the trains sometimes take five, 10 minutes. So that might be an issue. Not that it matters to, uh, to me, but.
No, I, I mean, again, like as we look at other properties, like this is kind of the only property, the properties that we've gotten to work in the village. Um, so if we, you know, don't, like our options are not, we're willing to wait to five or 10 minutes.
Yeah. Just, just bringing that up.
Yeah.
So just to speak to process on this, uh, changing the zoning, uh, for the village requires a local law. So I asked Elena to prepare a, a, a local law that we could, if we decide to introduce tonight, that would make the change as asked. That would, in a sense, set up us having a required public hearing, which we would do likely, as we typically do in the February regular meeting, and that would give people time to look over this, make, talk to whoever they need to, and would give us as a board a chance to hear from the community about any thoughts, questions, that, that sort of thing.
So if that, and if you go forward with that plan, what I will do, as promised that I will, um, I'll send a letter to the immediately abutting owners, um, so that they have a direct contact with me to answer any, you know, project-specific questions, and then they can come to the public hearing.
Just, uh, one, I don't know what number it is, next house up is one of the oldest houses in the village. Will be there some kind of buffer between.
This down here?
The store, the one next to 131. It's the, it's the very beautifully painted Italian.
Yeah, that's, that's this one right here.
That's two houses up, isn't it?
The past paint house?
Well, let me take out 131, it's the next house in.
Where's Samantha past paint live?
Yes.
I think that's this one right here, I'm pretty sure.
Um, to be honest with you, there's currently no plan, but that doesn't mean that there can't be. Um, the, the problem we do have is that even with this configuration, the truck routing for the, the gasoline is, is tight, um, and limited. Um, so we could, would have probably, if, if that's a requirement of the, the planning board, um, it would shift everything a little bit to the north. Um, but we really have to have that, we have to have that driveway width. Um, so we can, you know, not project prohibitive, but something that has to be, you know, kind of one of those details. But if the zoning doesn't happen, we can't even enter the conversation.
Sure. I'm just pointing out things that I think would be an issue.
I'm sure that's on the plan.
In the planning and zoning.
Yep. And this would be one step in the process, so the fact that this could be approved by the village board after hearing public, you know, from the public and in a public hearing, uh, there's still many more steps, um, to go. Do you want to add anything to that, Elena, in terms of legal process?
No, I mean, the first step is here. We have to do the SEACER determination as was said, so that will be done simultaneously with the public hearing, and there's a county referral.
Yep, okay. So we'll have some things to do to make sure that's in line for February.
So, so as I'm looking at this, there will be two entrance ways or exit ways on Hoozie Street itself?
Yes.
There's no, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no level crossing right there, right? No.
No.
So is, I mean, does that like an active Congress to get a level crossing put in there? Is it?
Is there one right here?
It is, it's a railroad. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I kind of figured.
Talking about, what do you mean by street, street crossing?
No, level, maybe across the railroad.
Oh.
I think that's, I think Hoozie Street's the one.
Yeah.
One spot where there is.
The only spot, yeah.
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 Yeah, because that ran up to the back of Unihog.
I think that that road extends over to where Unihog is, and there's a, there's a one there, but no, that one does not go through. That would be a fun process to try to jump into.
That's not a road, a special road, it's owned by the railroad.
Yeah.
Going back behind Unihog.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's not a street.
That's terrific. Okay. Maybe we'll be in touch with them anyway. Um. So any other questions on this?
Ever consider going behind the, the property and coming back out onto 22? And you'd probably have to buy another house.
No. No, we have not.
Just not an idea.
Yep. Maybe you can sit down with Kevin over lunch and he'll just give you all the possibilities. All right, so.
I just ate at the diner, it was really good.
Yep, so.
Just the, just, sorry, just the, the, the rectangles that gasp on them, right?
Sure, and then the next rank, the, the next square is the underground storage.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering what that square was, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, so again, one of the things I think that'll be helpful, um, and I could certainly produce it in the, in the future, is the, the truck routing, I mean, even though this is obviously substantially larger than the current Stewart's, um, the, it's still not, you know, it's not like North Hoozie big, like it's not, it's not spacious. Um, so it's gonna, there's gonna be some constraints that we're gonna have to deal with.
Okay.
Will it be electric chargers?
No. Um, we do all of our electric charging via tenant relationships, so Tesla, ChargePoint, the New York Power Authority, um, they're all tenants of Stewart's. They, um, primarily because of the infrastructure costs and the peak demand charge, we don't have a charging network.
All right, so we have this, uh, later on the agenda to officially introduce the, the local law and set the public hearing. Uh, there's nothing stopping us from jumping to that and doing it now, should the board want to do that?
I would suggest.
Okay.
I agree.
Um, so with that in mind, that is document number eight. One second here. Switch back to this. Uh, so what we have here is we have an introductory local law number one for the year 2024. This would be a local law amending the Village of Hoozie Falls zoning map. Um, and we have it specific to amend the zoning map, uh, for the tax parcel number, the size, and the location at 131 Church Street. Uh, the law would set it to change it to a commercial industrial zoning as per the other properties in that block. Um, and the zoning map that would, that follows, so we, in a sense, it's a pretty simple thing. We just need someone, do we need, do we have to formally introduce it and second it? Okay, so who would like to formally introduce this?
I'll move.
Doug, thank you, and who would like to second it?
Okay.
Okay, so it is officially introduced. Um, would like to have a motion to set a public hearing for our next meeting, which is on Valentine's Day. That's exciting. Uh, was it, so could I have that motion? Second, thank you, Dan. Further discussion on the public hearing? All in favor of the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? All right, carries. So the local law is formally introduced. We have a public hearing set for February 14th, next, uh, next week. Bring, uh, bring your spouses. Significant others, we can discuss it. Uh, we will put, uh, some of this information on our website, um, and if anyone wants to send in public comment who can't come to the meeting, it's very easy to just email the clerk. I was gonna say email myself, but that's probably more reliable, and, uh, she will just put it off to the side to be part of the record as we consider moving forward with this as a board.
And then you guys both have my contact information, so if anyone has any direct contacts for questions for Stewart's, to get direct on my line.
Do you want me to put, I can put your email address on our website if you want.
Yeah, don't put my phone number.
I will not put your phone number. I will just put your email address. Okay, all right.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that was Doug and Dan.
Yes, introduce, uh, oh, for the public, yeah, yes. Okay, um, moving on to the announcement and correspondence, uh, part of the meeting. Uh, just, it's all already on the agenda, but just to review, the village elections are coming up on March 19th, noon to nine in the Inborn Municipal Building. There are four two-year term trustee seats up on the ballot, so it's, uh, the trustees Alter, Walried, O'Malley, and Shedig's, uh, seats are up. Individuals may now sign independent nomination petitions and must be filed with the clerk by end of business day on February 6th, 2024, and it's 75 signatures needed? 50? Kevin, what is it again? 70? 100? How many signatures?
It's like 60 or something.
60?
I, I, I think it, I think it was 50, but they want 70, 75 in case.
In case, okay, that sounds right. We'll, we'll double check and make sure the clerk is armed with that knowledge should, should people reach out.
Do you want to just go on the county website or something and get the form?
It's typically the, um, percentage of what people voted for, the number of people voted in the governor's race in the Village of Hoozie Falls.
Oh, so you can say in the village race, I was gonna say, that's.
Okay, that's, that's for people, yeah. All right, um, I had another, uh, request. Jackie Houghton, who I see is here, thank you, Jackie. Uh, she wanted to, uh, have a discussion about consistent power outages in the Rogers Avenue area of the village. I don't know what we can do about it, but we are very glad to hear this from you, especially because you live up there, right?
Yes.
Take it away.
All right, I'm Jackie Houghton. I reside at AB Rogers Avenue here in the village. I am here to discuss the concern about the power outages that seem to hit that area frequently, um, whether we have weather events or not. Um, I'm here to request.
You were waiting last night for the power to go.
I was.
We were just saying that.
Some of my fellow neighbors are here. Um, so we are really just asking that the village assist us in finding a permanent solution. Um, some options that I have thrown out there were to be maybe a conference call with you guys collectively, uh, some of our residents in that area and National Grid to see if there's anything that we can do. I know from being on the town board that working with National Grid is pretty challenging.
That's an understatement.
Yeah, yeah. It is, I understand, yes. Um, however, I think that there is strength in numbers, and if we have the village board backing us, maybe we will get somewhere, hopefully, okay? Um, there was another option that maybe, um, our village superintendent could possibly help with this. Not sure if that's feasible or not.
So I have actually reached out to National Grid several times. I get laughed at.
I'm sure.
They narrowed it down to there's a, a transformer at the other Rogers Avenue by Michael Ford's house that is always pulling off, I said, can we, can we change the transformer next year while we get there?
Oh, so that's, okay.
That's their, their theory.
Their response, yeah, I think that's their response.
Where is that?
I didn't get your email, I didn't want to.
The corner of Rogers.
Come back with more information.
No, I hear the owner of Rogers Avenue.
Roger.
That's really close to the water tank, right?
No.
Oh, down further.
Well, that's up there.
Rogers, the corner of Rogers and me.
However.
Oh, down, okay, yeah, yeah. Very, very bottom, okay.
That one transformer doesn't affect, um, basically the entire area, so you're talking Dale Street, Home Street, I think even Stark Street gets affected.
So one of my guys lives on Ashley Drive, so I hear every time the power.
So it goes all the way up, so, yeah. So if we can just figure out some kind of plan to permanently fix that, now we were thrilled not to lose power last night, you know?
Pleasant surprise, no.
But we'd like it to be permanent.
I, I live in the street too, and I concur.
Yeah.
A lot of it has to do, I think, with a lot of dead trees, and they, when they trim the trees, they won't trim behind the, behind the lines, and they trim anything over the lines.
Right, right.
So all these dead trees are falling on a lot of the, the wires, especially up between your house and the town.
Like behind in the, yeah, yeah, they definitely do have that.
Is it primarily the transformer failing or primarily, uh, branches taking out the lines?
It's a, it's a fuse driven.
It's a, yeah, a fuse within the transformer trip.
Really?
Just a twin can trip.
It's a cutout with.
It's a cutout with.
Go clean the lanes.
Okay, okay.
I've probably lived there longer than anybody, I've probably lived there for probably fifty years on that road.
Yeah?
And this has been going on my whole life.
Wow.
So, Jackie, that being said. I just, you know, I've been dealing with National Grid directly with, for the village, and, because we're doing a streetlight project.
Mm-hmm.
I put a request in, in October for, uh, the evaluation, evaluation of our streetlights.
Haven't heard a word.
I've sent probably thirty emails.
Yeah.
And I've got one response. We have ninety days to return your response, and we'll return within ninety days. That's the only response, I, the only email I got in return.
Did they return it in ninety days?
Not yet, no, it hasn't been ninety days yet.
So I reached out to them too, because in the storm in September, we lost a couple of the streetlights by the park. They just, they, you know, we'll get to it. I tried talking to the guys that are working by the.
I was gonna say the guys by the church.
Yeah, they're all over the village, they're a bunch of.
They just, they're like, yeah, whatever, we gotta call our boss and, you know.
Until a work order is developed, they won't do any work.
So, okay, so.
Kenny, are those lights replaced yet?
Nope, nope.
So hearing this makes me believe that it's bigger than town and village boards, that we're gonna need to go. And I went to the county, I've had county support, and they say that our town areas that we are trying to, you know, say are.
I would reach out to both of them, I'll reach out to State Senate.
Which they are, so.
At one, at one point, we had a lot of issues I got, right, to the state public service department.
That's a great idea.
Once they get that letter from the state, they usually act.
Okay, all right, so maybe that's our next step, I mean, that's something that is.
Well, the letter or whatever came from everybody.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's gonna be like a collective, right, because I still firmly believe strength in numbers.
Jackie, I, uh, was just speaking with Elena, who suggested we should go right to our assemblyman, uh, and, and state senator as well.
Okay.
Um, and it actually makes sense for us to partner, because we have, uh, uh, our, our water tank up there, so we have our own infrastructure up there as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we could very easily highlight the list of all of the issues that we've been having with National Grid, but this, this can, really should be a priority.
Okay.
So, um, I, I think we're all very glad to go to bat and, and push on this.
Wonderful, that is great news.
Maybe with that also go to another legislative committee that regulates that.
Yes, and I'll have to ask that.
Go around the Rogers.
Yes.
Now, is there anything that is needed from us residents that live in that area, or they're gonna want us signing a petition or something?
If you, I would love if you could start gathering a petition, absolutely.
And then just send it to me?
Kenny?
Yes.
Yeah, and I've got your email, so we're good, yeah, okay.
So if I may, I, it's rough, I think, if there's a water tank up there, and they're like, well, it's not a generator. They told me, well, it's a generator up there, right? And I said, yes.
They can pay for gas.
Is there any word?
Is there any?
I've also talked to him, and you know, I reached out to him about the, the mess in front of the church. And they're like, you know, this is, you know, this is like the opening for the church, you know, it's been closed for five years or whatever.
I was so frustrated that that wasn't done in time.
We'll get it, we'll get to it in the spring, they're not gonna fix it till the spring, all that stuff going on in front of the church is not gonna be done until springtime. They just, National Grid doesn't care.
The priorities are definitely not small.
Jackie, let's work on just getting a simple paragraph or two laser focused on, on the issues that we're having, and then we can, you can start gathering petitions, if that's all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Gathering petitions, that'd be great.
If you, uh, get the information together and write a letter, and on your letterhead, you can straighten it straight to the public service.
I will definitely do that.
Is there anybody up there on oxygen or anything like that?
Um, I'm not aware of anybody.
Um, yeah, the, the people across the street from, because, from you.
Oh, um, yeah, I forget their name, I always think they're like Frost or something like that.
Actually, they're in there, I've never seen them.
Can I have a trustee to partner with me, if you push through on this, to make sure we keep this moving?
I've just said that may be.
That may be a nice.
Well, because it's life or death, right?
Right, yes, yes.
Do you also want to?
Sure, I don't think I can, absolutely.
Jackie, uh, CC, Deb, and Bobby on, on this as well with me, and we'll just keep it moving as a collective.
All right, that sounds great. Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
All right, I have a few quick updates. Uh, we have a carbon changeout, as we typically do regularly, scheduled for January sixteenth. Uh, trustees, when, uh, we go over the water report, I'll circle back with an update on the, the pumps back there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, we are in the process of incorporating board meeting documents, including minutes, agendas, reports, and these slideshows to our village website. Uh, we've gotten a couple of our more recent years done, and we're already starting on the next couple of years, um, to get them back and set. We also upload our audio, um, uh, from all of our glorious meetings onto YouTube, so I'm gonna add a link to that as well. And then that means that we'll have all this stuff active for anyone who wants to, uh, peruse. Uh, and third, uh, I want to personally thank everyone who was involved with the New York Forward applications, yet again. It was one of the honors of my time as mayor to represent all of us on the, um, uh, at Governor Hochul's announcement and ceremony at Lake George, it's great to see, uh, so many of, of the people involved there for it. Uh, the community should be very proud of the award, the vision for the growth and economic development that came out of all of these people, and their work, and their effort, and their ideas, and especially proud of all of the people who worked on it, so I just want to thank you guys again on that.
If I could.
Absolutely.
Especially Doug.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not with all time, but is it fair to say length of expertise from dealing with nitrogen? Understanding the, the hoops and.
We couldn't have done it without him.
Yeah, what, what's needed to go through.
And, uh.
And, I, if, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I, I know another place that I, I work with, they got it, they spent a lot of money to hire people to do all this, which they didn't have.
Yeah.
They didn't have a Doug there, who had that expertise in the community, so.
Everybody should have a Doug on their board.
So Doug needs a raise.
So, thank you for all involved, and I, I think it was Kevin who was the very first person who mentioned we should go after that. I think it was you, you or Mary Ann, or both of you, the impetus.
Kevin approached me back before I was on the board.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, it's just, just awesome, and just as another testament to Doug, uh, we got our, our manual on, on how to start encompassing our brain on it, hundred, how many pages? Hundred and thirty?
Hundred and thirteen.
Hundred and thirteen.
Hundred and thirteen. Doug's already been through it, so, uh, that's, that's the kind of.
We'll report on that later.
Awesome, awesome.
A lot of people have been asking for a copy of the, our application, is that online somewhere?
Oh, I have to put that on the website, I had meant to do that already.
Yeah, the slide.
I'm sorry on that. The slideshow, I'll put the applications, yes.
Fifteen hard copies we should make and give the folks that are gonna stay involved in details.
I had meant to do that already when I was doing all the other, uh, updates, so I will have a page for that. And Doug, I, I think if it makes sense, I'll just make a separate page, all for New York Forward, and as there's a new thing to announce, we'll just have it on the top.
A requirement that we have, either a separate site or a page on the website, groups, they start to process, the consultant will control the content.
Okay, so we'll start right now with just basic stuff, and once we get to that point, perfect. Yeah, I'll get that online, and I'll, I'll put that on Facebook as well, and that, that it's up there for people to peruse, I had meant to do that already.
It'd be great to be able to put that on the Huzick Rising page and.
Absolutely, absolutely, I feel like I miss people to be heard. I don't know why my slide isn't here for people to be heard, but now it is the people to be heard section, if anyone would like to speak, as we normally do. Uh, we typically set a general limit based on how many people, um, speak. Just as a reminder, we audio record all of our meetings, uh, so it's part of the record, and, um, we don't have to have a back and forth. Sometimes it's just listening, it's kind of up to, up to the board, but we try to keep it a nice balance of, this is a formal meeting, and also if it's something we can talk about easily, that's fine. So, would anyone like to speak to the board tonight?
I'll just give a public comment, Sam Raskin of Bank of Vermont, I'm an outsider. Uh, from what I've seen tonight, you guys are very professional on how you conduct your meetings and how you present it to the general public, so, here, here, how are you doing, thanks?
Thank you, thank you.
So it's good to put an A to the face of post, Solon's post.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing, I see.
Kevin knows who I am.
I'm sure.
So.
I got to know you through the Woods Brook, through the Woods Brook, yep.
Wall Street with my aunt.
Yep, yep.
On, on problem number two with the propane tank that felt loose.
Yep.
I hope this board.
Did you?
Board with the, with any propane tank, there she'll be on a pad and angered in place, they don't hope he floats away. And that was three years ago.
Yep.
Yes, I turned on Hall Street, there was a propane tank.
Yeah, five hundred gallon tank, those would have been there if, if it ever went.
Oh my gosh, that would be so frightening, lost that whole.
And you guys did a phenomenal job on that too, in July.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Sam.
No problem.
Anyone else? All right, we're gonna move on. Police report. OIC, SGT, lots of.
Uh, so, as you can see from the report, uh, this year was much busier than last year, um, and our arrest numbers are up from many previous years. We're starting to get things in shape, uh, taking over from Chief Collinari, we're continuing some of the stuff that he had started. Uh, we're gonna bring up some stuff later to continue that progress that he started, um, and move us forward some of this stuff, as you guys have probably seen online, um, we have a new patch, which you will start to see.
There it is.
Yep, it's up on the top of the screen.
That's our new patch.
So.
I'll get a better picture of that.
Thanks to the Historical Society for providing the pictures for that, um, that was huge. And so, once we get our new uniforms here in the near future, those will be placed onto those. The officers are gonna look a little bit different when you see them, um, wearing different hats and wearing blue uniforms, so.
Hmm.
Um, we're gonna get more professional look, nobody wearing the same thing, and.
Is that Huzick Falls blue?
Uh, no.
That's good, that's good.
We'll be going back to Stetsons that we used to have.
Cool.
Yes.
Next to your horses?
Yes. So we will, occasionally you will see me out, I have my Stetson already, so occasionally I'll be out, and I'll have mine on. But as we get everything figured out, because we have new recruits coming in, and all the officers need uniforms, we're trying to figure out pricing and all that stuff from many different suppliers, so it's gonna take a little bit to get that done. The other stuff we'll go over, uh, later on, the PD's website is up and running, bear with me, on top of all the other stuff, um, I have going on. I'm also managing the website, so as I get to it, I will get to it.
Oh, that reminds me of something I'll need to bring up, sorry.
Um, it's huzickfallspolice.org, um, so in the near future, you're actually gonna be able to click on the officer's name, and it'll pull up their email address, so if you have a case or something with them, you'll be able to email them, there's a info link on the last page. So if somebody fills out something there, um, that will send the email directly to my inbox, and I will get that email. We're gonna have a, a new foil form that'll be placed on a separate page, there's going to be something that we're gonna start, which I think, whenever you like, it's called Property Check Program, um, which you can contact the police department, if you're on vacation or going a way out of town, you contact the police department, you fill out the form for your property check, you send it back in, it's registered, and then during the shifts, the officers will be required to go around and check the property, they're not gonna go in, so they're just gonna, if they can, they'll just do a drive-by, make sure the property looks secure, if they have to go do a walk-around, they will do that. Um, and the other part will be for all the businesses to be registered, um, because one of the things we deal with, especially on midnights, is if you get a business, an issue with a business, it's who do we contact in case of emergency? Um, so there'll be a business registration form, so the business owners can fill that out, and we can have that on file, should something happen, we will be able to contact you. A lot of the stuff we're doing, um, for those who don't know me, I've worked at a couple of different agencies, from the state all the way down to a local police department, and a lot of this stuff is through accreditation and professional policing, um, and part of my duties when I was with North Greenwood was property checks. And we did business and residential property checks every shift, and that's actually how we found a burglar one night at a commercial business, the front window, um, was broken out on their second property check, they went by the first one, business was secured. Couple hours later, they went by, found the window broken, so it was able to allow us to narrow down the timeframe of when that, that action occurred, and it helped us track down the suspect.
Good stuff.
Can you do property checks on, like, the playground on a regular basis, the town playground?
That'll be part of, there's gonna be, part of my moving on and doing forms, is there's gonna be a, a shift activity sheet, and they're gonna be required to check certain areas, and the playgrounds will be on that and certain things, so it's gonna be a list of things.
The gazebo.
Yes.
That's one I would, I would like to have kind of inspected, so if by chance we notice there is new graffiti, that means we'll know exactly approximately the time of when it was discovered, and we can go back, and, yeah, that's, that's great.
Other chiefs, um, in the area, try to get some forms from them, um, so we can get some of these forms incorporated. I've been in the office since probably last week, just doing forms and things like that. My office hours are, when you see my blue truck there, I'm there. Because what happens is if there's a shift open in the afternoon or something, I will fill that, rather than coming in during the day, I'll be there later at night. I can guarantee you, I'll be there every court night, and usually I come in on Mondays, and I'll do a day shift where I'm not on patrol, but I'll be in the office, so that helps out with these, with the office, um, and payroll and things like that, and if somebody has something, we can come find me, but.
Do you, um, does the police department do speed check logs? Say, say somewhere like River Street, Ball Street, Coming Street, the habitual complaints, where they come from? If we had on record cars speeding up Ball Street, and, well, if this is what we.
Well, we, we've done better. Um, the sheriff's office has graciously lent us their speed trailer.
So that records the speeds?
It is currently, um, we put it into the rescue squad, we thaw it out. Um, so it's in there actually charging up and thawing out, and I gotta pull the data, and then I'm gonna put it back out, uh, so we pulled it just before the storm. Um, it's gonna go back out, the, they have said we can hold on to it for as long as we need, until they need it back. Um, so far, I put it on Main Street, I put it on River Road, um, so you'll start to see it move around. The trick with it is, it's not a, let's see how fast and high, we can get the number, it will never display a number until you're over the speed limit. Um, and it actually won't say a number, it'll just say slow down if you're too fast. Um, we didn't want it to display the number, because people try to see high score.
Wait, wait, you know we do that?
Yes. So what that instrument will do is, um, when I plug the card into it, it'll pull the data off, and it should tell me time, day, and speeds during those times at each day, so, um, that's a huge asset that we got from the sheriff's office, because they only have two of them, and they said, go ahead and take it.
That's great.
Um, so I'm gonna move it as much as I can, with winter weather, it's gonna be a little difficult, so I gotta play it around the, the snowstorms. That's why it's inside right now, and as long as it plays nice. The next spot for it to go is up on the High Street. Um, Holly Cross has said we can park it on her lawn, so, and I learned, we all know how John is with his lawn, so I'm making sure it's rosy before I drive on his lawn with a trailer on.
That's smart.
I'm sure the residents would be happy to see that there, rather than, than one of the PD roosters there.
Yeah.
Because they don't get a ticket from the, from the speed machines.
Yes, and so it's gonna go around and, and start pulling data, it's gonna be huge when we do grants. I met with, uh, a gentleman from the New York State Sheriff's Association on Monday, in regards to the grants that we got turned down on by me and the traffic safety grants, it's almost, I almost ventured to say we probably won't get turned down next year after all the data I was given.
That's good, that is the game.
That was a very good meeting.
Good.
And there's resources out there, even I didn't know about, and he said, that's not unusual during a change, but the new guy has no clue.
That's great.
Haven't you noticed in Greenwood and Cambridge, they now have speed limit signs that are solar?
They are.
Were those a grant?
They probably were, um, I have looked at those, and they're about six to ten thousand dollars.
I was gonna ask, how much?
I, I've seen them close to ten.
They are not cheap. I have put in, the last grant we got turned down on, I put it for a trailer. Um, and so I've been trying to figure out other grants we can get for that, there's only so many grants out there for law enforcement. The next one coming up is body worn cameras, that's what's coming out, and then they're gonna be putting out the governor's traffic safety again for reconsideration for the next fiscal year, so.
Okay.
So as they come up, I try to watch the grants.gov page, if something comes up that we can apply for, I, I have to look for it.
Do you guys want to jump to the police priority purchases right now?
I just, quick question, why are you supposed to call lines up so much higher than years past, is it?
Oh, one big item about that, um.
I'm just curious, because that's, I mean, that's.
We, we started counting it differently in the beginning of twenty twenty-two. We used data from every call that Officer Davik, who got permission from the county to do this work for the village, went through and checked how every, every call was, that was taken in and is logged that way. Previously, we had just done calls that we responded to that I think led to a report.
Yeah, so we used to do it as, and that used to be my job, is pulling the monthly calls out of our report system. Now we get a much more accurate system, because sometimes, say, an officer, and it's not on. Now we get a much more accurate system because sometimes, say, an officer, and it's not unheard of, gets six, seven calls in a day. If they forget to put in that silly call that they went to that was like a, say, a nine-one-one hangup at stores or something, and it was just the attendant, or the attendant accidentally hit the pendant and they forgot to put it in because they had three domestics. Now.
Yeah.
Officer Davik pulls it, he says, this is actual calls that work in the village, and then he breaks it down for us.
Right.
Into calls that we respond to, calls that the sheriff's office and New York State respond to, and then calls that we go to outside and they request ours.
Yeah, so this top number on the monthly count is calls that we went to. If we were busy or didn't have people on whatever morning, this is the, these are the calls that other agencies handled. And then these are the calls where we were called by dispatch nine-one-one and sent out of the village because we were closer, so it'd be calls in the town. And then once the proper sheriff's department or New York State police arrives, we hand it over to them. Uh, which has been nice to see, because it's been around four to ten percent of our call volume. It's been a, a, just comparatively like.
Any of those that went down with what the other agencies handled, because I'm trying to cover the overnights more.
Yeah.
Really, the only ones that we don't have covered is Sunday into Monday and Monday into Tuesday, which we, way back in the past when I first started, that wasn't covered. But as we get more people on, we're gonna be able to cover more of these shifts.
So, any other questions?
Just, just one quick, on the website, there's still some bogus Facebook page for the Whoosick Falls Police Department out there. I recall that there was a question, I was told that somebody set it up and that.
Right.
They were being used and it was being presented as a, but I assume it's still out there.
I don't know.
A Facebook page?
Yeah, I'm familiar. Is, there's a Facebook page called Whoosick Falls Police New York or something like that. It's actually an employee-generated page, which is fine, as long as it's labeled as a union page or an employee associate.
You think it's a department?
It gives, yeah, to Doug's point, it gives the impression of being the official spokespiece of the village police department. So, again, even generally, they could add their own Whoosick Falls Police members or whatever. It just has to be presented in a way that a person going down there realizes this is not the official.
I'll have to look it up, because I, first I'm hearing of it, I think it's.
It's not the one.
Our old one was whoosickfallspd.com. That one is.
It's a Facebook page. It's a Facebook.
Because there was one that had been set up kind of back in the day by an employee, but was used by the departments. Is that the one with the new patch?
It's.
It has, it has a new patch on it?
That is, that is our active one.
Okay, that's, so that's an okay one.
If it has a new patch on it, that is our active Facebook. There's only three of us.
Previously, that had been set up and run by employees, um, of the departments.
Yeah, that's.
But it is now officially ours, under our control.
Yes, that one is our.
Okay, then, yeah, that, that was the one.
That was the one, okay. That is, that is, I think we actually kinda took control of that when Chief Colnery was here.
Yes.
Okay.
It may be worth going through there and making sure that everything.
I did, I switched the website the other day.
Perfect, thank you.
Good, okay.
All right.
So the new one.
Good. Um, just because we have him here and we're talking reports, I wanted to throw a quick spreadsheet up of a couple of big asks. And I'll let Officer Sergeant, sorry, Hudson, talk about what these are and what these mean. Um, I, there's one I forgot and those are video surveillance upgrades in the municipal building in the gazebo, so that will be a, another expense. But I hadn't prioritized these, and his first priority was to go through Lexipol, who we actually use for our training. And go big into a contract that would allow us to have them update our policies and implementation. That would be both in line with accreditation standards and they, basically part of their service is staying on top of all of the latest changes that come down from state governments, passed and signed by the governor. Do you wanna explain anything else with that, or?
No, it's actually a really good program. I think PD uses it, East Greenwood uses it, the sheriff's office uses it. This would allow all the officers actually to have policies with them and the field as well. So it'll be on their, the department phones, if they can have it on their phone. As soon as they review the policy, they automatically acknowledge they reviewed it and it keeps record for us. Like the mayor said, Lexipol does all the back work, so if there's any legislative updates, they send me an email and say, hey, you have to change this policy. They also make sure all of our policies, like use of force, the anti-bias, and all those policies are up to date and correct. Which, that's part of the review board process, so we gotta make sure everything is kosher. This'll also help us speed up our main goal of becoming accredited sooner. Because they do all of that legwork and this would cost much less than somebody spending all the time to do accreditation.
Oh my goodness, yeah.
Because somebody doing accreditation is literally a full-time job, just that.
Now, that twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty is two things. There's a, a upfront cost and there's an annual cost that we'll be paying every year as well, which I wanna say, what's the annual one? Is it fourteen?
Fourteen, it's fourteen, seven, forty, thirty.
So that is something that we will be committing to in our budget for the fiscal year that runs from June one to May thirty, whatever, the next meeting.
First implementation, our first year is the fourteen.
Oh.
The yearly.
The annual's eighty-six, eighty-two, right?
Oh, I did it backwards.
Yeah.
See, the eighty-six, eighty-two, yeah, because both are accreditation, so eighty-six, eighty-two.
Eighty-six, eighty-two, oh-five is.
Okay, so I had the number backwards.
This is the group that you had mentioned, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I strongly recommend it, because if we, they don't have an administrative wherewithal to keep track of it, we're vulnerable above the analytic appliance and situations. The officers need to be armed with what the policy.
And, and it's, it's so much harder for smaller departments to be able to keep up on this.
Yeah.
It's money well spent.
Absolutely.
We're behind it, we definitely need it.
Let's keep going through, but we'll come back and approve if we need to make a purchase, uh, or, um, if we wanna use our ARPA funds to slide over in general.
Our local parking laws, man, they're too. What? Our local parking laws.
That's our own policy.
No.
I'll see now, that's under local laws.
But they've already started to review.
I'm, I'll go over, I can go over that in a few minutes.
Well, I was in the village office last couple of weeks going through a lot of the laws and there's a lot of laws pertaining to your parking and I think some of the signs are gone or.
Yes.
And, and I talked to, I was up today that there's a lot of old laws and can't they be archived, the old ones? Because you'll look back there and you'll find something, then you find out later that it's already been amended.
It's not the current revision.
Yeah.
When Dev and I spent like an afternoon or two going through all the local laws, we tried to identify this one, you know, because a lot of times the newer ones replace other ones.
There was a couple of notes on the top, but not for all of them.
Yeah, we.
Since, since they're all in chronological order, what I, when I'm looking for something, what I usually do is I start from most current and go backwards. So probably, some of the old ones have indexes, so maybe we could do indexes for them.
What we should do is we should set up another afternoon sometime and we should go through and keep organizing back and then start scanning them into PDFs. Because a lot of them are on the Department of State website, but I feel like it, that only goes back to like two thousand.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Oh, ninety-seven, okay.
Yeah, we just checked that the other day.
And I know in the safe, we have like logs that go back to like the fifties and forties, which would be fun.
We have some from the eighteen hundreds.
Get your microfiche machine.
You're taking the archive, you always have to just take it out and file it downstairs somewhere.
Yep, yep, or PDF it and it's online.
I just a quick question for Elena. What, what, I mean, is there a rough idea how much it costs to do E code three sixty type things?
It's not cheap.
No, it's not.
Once you get it up and running, it's like.
Expensive.
It is expensive, because I know even when we just do code changes and send it in, it's expensive.
And a lot of times, and I was talking to a couple of different municipally-linked people about this for different municipalities. A lot of times they will bring in, um, like a, like a firm to help them get all of that stuff together and organized to E code. So it's not just E code, but oftentimes they're also paying a firm to help get all that stuff together, unless you have a Doug.
That's something I can do, but, to get it together, but, I, I mean, I don't know what it would be to send them what we have and have it started. I can't imagine it's cheap. I mean, you could get a quote.
We've started, because the zoning law is on E code, but that's all. If you go to some other municipalities, especially some of the big ones around Slick County that have more money, they have everything up there, including policies. It's awesome.
Municipal regulation, television, etc., whatever.
And it's great, because if any developers are coming in and wanna see something, they know to go there. All the people who know of it know to go there.
Were you saying sending me downstairs with the boxes, the banker's boxes, and the RV base?
Yeah, that's a great, great future goal.
Although Rob and I did find gas logs for police cars from the nineteen thirties.
We did, it was great reading.
Great job.
All right, so let's keep going through this from an evidence management system. We've talked about this before and we've all been in support of, of, of moving forward with this. We had, when Chief was here, he had gotten wind from the sheriff's department that they were going to have their own and it would be free to us to use and it would be coming around towards the beginning of the year. And as the beginning of the year approached, it was like, haha, just kidding. It's gonna be like another six months to a year. So, this one, who, other, other folks use this one, right?
Uh, no, not that one. This is a, so that we don't have another server to maintain. This is gonna be a cloud-based.
Oh, okay.
Application that will store also our picture evidence as well as the physical evidence downstairs, so it's gonna manage bulk, so it's gonna save us another server to maintain.
That's, that's great. Um, the PD does not have a color copy machine, which is.
And ours, when it dies, it's dead.
Yeah, there is, that one's old. Are, are you guys on the, the random free one I picked up, or we still?
Not yet. They got that one working against them and.
All right. Great. Um, but that is through the same, uh, group that we used when we upgraded our copy machines in the village office. But we elected not to go for the color, because we didn't have a huge need on it and we still had a significant upgrade with ours. But they, because of their work, they need to have a color printer. Uh, we have an evidence refrigerator downstairs that is not a full-size refrigerator, um, and it is just about full. So, this is a pretty easy need. We'll have to get two more quotes, but I don't think we need to approve this one because of the amount of it. Just, you get your three quotes and make your purchase. I don't think that requires more action, right?
Refrigerator. We got, the best one we got.
You guys don't really have a purchasing policy, so.
That one I just put it up on D P.
Yes.
And I said, oh, look at that, that's perfect.
We have a peculiar procurement policy.
I don't know if I've seen, I know I drafted one, but I don't know if I've seen one of you guys.
For a federal organization, that needs to be.
Any DNA from a sex offense kit.
I think it's just a matter of figuring out, taking what I drafted and saying.
Right, but we need.
Do we need it or?
What I drafted is probably more, more involved than it needs to be.
Yep, that's fine. We can certainly record that. And once we come up with it, we send it to our department head and be like, here's what we're thinking.
The state will send them back to us instead of.
Some of it will be, we need.
But something like that wouldn't.
Well, for six hundred dollars, we need like a second, a third.
We don't need to do it, these are just things that he has. I don't think we, these three here, the evidence refrigerator, the records rack and the gun locker, that's four of them at two fifty each. We don't need board approval. I think we're just good to say, go and do that. As a department head, you have that, just like, just like Kenny would. Yes, yes. Um, but the bigger items, these three, possibly this one, I have to check the cutoff number of the procurement policy.
I think it's twenty-five hundred.
I think it is two, but I'll bring it up right now. Require board, uh, approval. Do you wanna talk about any other items there, or are you, you feeling content?
Um, the last, well, the records rack, um, we're gonna reorganize our records room. Currently, everything's in, as Dan said, like banker's boxes stacked together. We are going to organize our room and put everything on racks so we can get to it easily. Again, that's part of the accreditation stuff. A lot of this stuff is like accreditation based. The E schedule, that is to make mine and Denise's life a lot easier. Currently, we use paper timesheets, um, so people.
Make it probably simple too.
Yeah, make Bobby simple. So currently, they come sign in, um, and then when somebody has to do their bid for each month, um, they send me an email and I have to go through all the emails. Dan and I are used to using these systems in EMS and it is.
Everybody's done.
So much easier. Somebody could bid on the shift they want, I can look it up, assign it, done. It just makes life so much easier for everybody in the long run.
And is that a nineteen hundred and seventy-five, it's annual, right?
Yeah. Keeps track. That one, you can sign up for like tracking time off, everything, but I just did timekeeping, it's good.
Some of my places, you, the, the, the software will assign a bid period by seniority and automatically generate something. So if you're the senior guy, you get the first email, you get your time slot, it opens up the schedule, you plug in your name, and it closes it at a certain time and it goes to the next one, basically does that. All the stuff. It's, it does, it's amazing, some of it. All my employers will switch you and nobody's doing paper.
Yeah, I didn't look at any other systems really. I'm familiar with this one, the two places that I work, so it's like easy for me to use this one.
Yeah.
Like, I went.
Compared to paper, yeah. And also, the other nice thing is just.
I will duff it some of these too, yes.
From an expense point to, it, it, everything's time stamped, right?
Yes.
So when two employees say, why did that shift? And then one says, I bid it beforehand. It's all time stamped. There's nobody saying that the chief ignored my email, ignored this, my phone call.
Would that system be helpful to you, Kenny, at all? I mean, it's.
I mean, not really, because my guys, when, when, when we get a snowstorm, something like that, everybody comes in, so we don't, we don't have shifts that need to be filled.
Okay.
You know?
But also doesn't, I, if I'm thinking correct, it basically generates all the hour logs for Denise, right? So there's no need to like.
Yeah, weekly, so.
Sit there with a calculator.
For example, I'll put on my other hat, um, my employees at the rescue squad, when I have to pay them every week, I click on last week, I select their name, and then it totals it for me at the end of the week. It says they worked this many hours and here's their shifts they worked.
And you can put rules in it too, like, um, from oh-six-hundred on the twenty-fifth of December to oh-six-hundred on the twenty-sixth, calculate it, two X. You know, with the whole time, whatever the contract is, it will automatically generate holiday, bills, everything.
So just because we've talked about ARPA, uh, spending before, um, and we had been kind of sitting, um, off to wait to see what some of the larger police needs were. Um, if we take the accreditation, um, cost and we go back to that one for just a moment, come on, computer, you can do this. Uh, the evidence tracking system and the color copy machine, which are all some significantly larger than normal expenses, that comes out to thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four, so roughly thirty-six thousands. So what we could do, uh, from the ARPA point of view, and Bobby, um, you're gonna have to give me again, the, the way that we move it over to the, to the general fund as a, a way we do that.
Yeah, Denise said it is, uh, said it's under general allowance. I asked, did you remember how we transferred funds to the ARPA, to the general fund? She said, yes, under general allowance.
So I think we could.
Motion for a budget modification transfer.
Probably just transfer one account.
Thirty-six thousand dollars in ARPA funds to general allowance?
Right, that makes sense.
So we could do that? Does anyone wanna offer some move on what Elena just said?
Uh, I do.
All right, and a second, do you wanna say that again so?
For Clarissa?
Yeah.
It'd be a motion for, to approve a budget modification. Do you wanna do the thirty-six thousand or just to transfer thirty-six thousand dollars from ARPA funds to a general allowance fund?
Thirty-six thousand?
Yes.
From ARPA, okay.
Further discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um, any abstentions or, uh, opposed?
I think we.
All right, hearing none?
We had a hundred and twenty-one thousand in ARPA, I thought we had.
I don't think that hundred and twenty-one thousand was right. I'm gonna have to check in with her on that. I'm wondering if she missed some of these bills, but I'll, I'll, I'll check in with her.
That's if she told me a hundred and twenty-one, that was.
All right. She may not have paid the parking study as well. I don't know if that's been paid yet. I don't, can't remember where they are on that, but we'll check.
Okay.
So I will.
All the bills are in for the parking study.
Okay.
They're in, Kevin, but we don't know.
All right.
Who was the second on that?
Uh, who was, uh, Dev was the second on that. All right, any further discussion for the police reports?
Well, I thank her buddy for that. Um, the only other things is Dev and I talked about parking tickets the other day.
Oh, yes, parking tickets.
We did order those. Um, we did have one question for Elena. In regards to adopting New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law and parking laws.
Do you have, let me see, do we want to walk this over here?
Do you mean putting it into ours so that there's a civil penalty that the money comes to the village versus?
Yes. So we just have to make a local law that concludes all the, all the, the laws that are all charged?
Yeah, I can follow up with you guys about specifically. I know, like, different municipalities do different things. There's the school bus program, which is a whole nother thing, but, you know, camera programs and different things too, so if you're just looking to do parking.
There's a few things in the, in the tickets, but if you, you can email that ticket to Elena as well.
Yeah, I'm supposed to give this back. I'll probably get it tomorrow.
Okay.
And then I'll email it over to you and it's open there.
Draft, was it?
The draft of the parking ticket layout.
Oh, okay.
So it's, we're gonna start using street tickets again.
Oh, yeah, the one, the one, one question we, well, that I had, I had, I don't, I don't know if we talked about this, but it says abandoned junk discarded motor vehicles. So does that come under our, our new law?
As, as long as it's charged under the new law.
So the cost has gotta be whatever it's going to be, so.
Right.
Well, there, there's cars in our village that look parking lots, that was covered under the parking lot and Andy came up with.
Well, there, there's cars in our village, look parking lots, that was covered under the parking law that Andy came up with a couple of years ago.
Do you have a copy of that one?
So this, so they, the one on, the one on, it, it actually says abandoned junk discarded motor vehicle. So that means on, in, on public property? Or is that like, is that including, uh, people who have it in their yards that we're trying to get rid of?
Well, it's addressed in the, the, the parking law we did and it specifically points out our, our village parking lots and it says. No cars can be unregistered, uninspected and has to follow complete motor vehicle law.
We're talking about thematically the same thing, but in two different instances. You're talking about as it applies to properties and you're talking specifically about the, the parking lot.
That's what you're talking about, right, Deb?
We will.
Yeah, but I'm talking about what it says on the ticket. So if, if Officer, Sergeant Hudson is out giving tickets. And he comes upon an abandoned junk discarded motor vehicle in a public parking lot, in a village parking lot, then this applies. What about the ones we talked about in people's yards? Does that, does this include that or is this just?
I think this is private property.
We, we.
Didn't we draft it?
It flows down though, but.
The, the remedy there is removed. I don't, I don't remember, there's nothing in there about, I, I don't think about.
Okay, so this is just, should, well, okay. I just wanna make sure that everybody knows.
For parking, streets and lots.
Okay, that's what I, that was my question. Thank you.
It's a, that's a code issue.
It, it sounds like it may be a good idea to throw an email thread out there that includes Elena that we can hash this out to make sure we understand the situations, right?
When you start this.
Especially when the officer check understand.
Yes, which he's doing, yeah.
I didn't order any warning tickets.
Well, that's one more thing that we wanna do is we wanna sit down with the judges and just explain what our processes are. What's that?
I spoke to Mary Pat today.
Awesome, awesome.
Couple, couple things real quick. Um, actually, the, the junk car thing does allow the police department, but. It probably should be reworded a little bit because it talks about the code inspector, but it says it can be, um, it says it can be enforced by the police department. This chapter may be enforced by the building inspector, the law in any officer, police officer, which is false. But it ruled the procedure talks about the code enforcement officer, right? Um, do we have a schedule fines for parking tickets? Because I know, I, I don't remember.
So the, I think Deb has the copy of the ticket. So the ticket, it's. The big change with these is now the tickets are going to have the fine amount on them.
Okay, he said, no, like, there was no announce before and somebody said.
So the old tickets were very generic, cheap tickets that didn't say anything, but it said, please submit, you wanna pay. Matter of fact, it didn't say how much.
Yeah, somebody came up to me and said, I got this ticket and it said, if I wanna pay, I'll just pay it. But how much is it? I don't know.
I don't know.
So they'd come to us and we didn't know either. So we're like, we don't know. So the new tickets, we, Deb and I looked it up and it's actually, most of them are the state suggested minimums.
Yep.
And that's according to your local law review that you guys did, yeah, which is great.
Can we increase the handicap one?
Nope.
I'm, I'm all for that.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, you know. Second thing, I, I don't remember if, if Chief Culinary mentioned this thing or somebody else, but in Troy, I guess they, when they, when they write a traffic ticket, they write it against both. The New York State.
That's what.
That's what we're gonna look up.
The village code. And then the, I, I think the city attorney handles it.
If it's a village code violation, yes, it would be village. But if it's New York State.
ADA.
Then usually it's ADA unless they designate their authority onto the village attorney.
So does that mean in court nights, we'd have to have a village-connected attorney available to do that? Okay.
Right now, all the offices, well, actually, right now, I do all of them.
Okay.
Um.
That may be worth a local attorney.
Unless the officer's there, I do all the plea deals for all of our village tickets.
Okay.
Against V and T, right?
Yes.
Against V and T. Yeah, I mean, he was saying that they squeaked, but it's, it's almost unheard of that somebody says, no, I, I'd rather, I, I'd rather. They, they basically say, you know, you got this ticket, you pay a hundred dollars to the city of Troy or whatever. There's no points, there's no nothing, like it's a civil penalty type of thing. Or I guess in theory, you could ask to be prosecuted on a V and T law and get points and not.
Depending on what it is, some things have points, some don't. Usually what happens is if somebody has a clean abstract. Um, it'll get reduced to like a parking, which.
Non-moving violation, right?
It's a non-moving and we know which certain ones to charge. Um, so if you had a twelve oh three, it stays in the village. But if you had a twelve oh one. It doesn't stay in the village.
Yeah.
You hit a twelve oh one, some goes to the state, some goes to the village. Twelve oh three, stays in the village.
So, okay, this is, this is all very good discussion and I, I don't think anyone expected the, the police report to go this long, but this is. Uh, Sergeant Hudson's first, uh, as the O I C, so.
Is the, um, the live scan machine is in, which were received for twenty thousand dollars on a grant.
Via grants, yep.
Thank you to Kenny for his guys carrying it, 'cause it took three of them to get down to the basement.
Gosh.
A booking machine.
Oh. It's, it's specifically for D W I, right?
No, it's for any arrests we do.
Oh, I thought it was just specific to D W I, okay.
Us and the sheriff's office will use it.
Right, because. Uh, yeah, and, 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 um, Sergeant Hudson has already communicated with, is it the sheriff's office and state police or just the sheriff's departments?
I've communicated with the sheriff's office. They're gonna start, um, once we get everything up and running. If you see a sheriff's car outside and there's nobody working, um, they're using our station to process an arrest rather than drive all the way to Troy. And then all the way back for arraignment. They're gonna be able to do everything in our station and do the arraignment there. So it doesn't, they don't have a suspect or somebody in custody for an extended duration of time. Um, I haven't reached out to the state police in that aspect, but I have reached out to them and getting due agreements and M O U's for our radio procedures. 'Cause all of our cars, unknown to me until yesterday, have state police car numbers.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, Kenny?
So kind of relevant for this. So in the past couple storms and, you know, just driving around, there's a ton of cars parked right on intersections. We can't get around with plow trucks. What kind of permission do I need to get no parking here, the corner signs go? Do I have to go through like the Congress?
You have to go through the local Congress, 'cause parking changes, uh, now, the, but there's an interesting question, because back when Neil was here. He thought he had found information that you can't have parking at an intersection. The famous one is the current. The current Stewarts and what's the Willard, what's the one right there?
That was cited in, that was, that was cited in the parking.
Yeah, they talked about, he talked about that during his presentation.
So can we set up no parking in that spot as per state law?
I would think so, as long as you're not putting, changing parking, wouldn't you?
As long as you're adopting.
I mean, almost.
So, so a lot of the issues we're having are in second word. I mean, not only can you not see the stop sign because cars are parking right on the intersection.
Yes.
You can't get around the corners of the plow trucks. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a nightmare and I just didn't know if we could go plow, put some no parking and hear the corner signs up.
Okay. If it's just a simple put up signs, I do wanna make sure that we send letters to all of the locations nearby that will be affected, so they understand. And in a sense, this is a safety issue and this is a law that is above us, that we need to enforce. Um, yeah, okay.
It's, it's, it's pretty bad.
Okay. Any, any other questions, police report? Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the police report?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose your attentions? Carries. Thank you, Sergeant. Um, all right, let's move on. Uh, code enforcement report, Mark. Anything you wanna highlight?
Uh, no, I didn't, I, I worked on the letter today for, uh. Abandoned structure houses, whatever, and, uh.
Do you wanna put that up on the screen or wait?
Within that, within that law, it mentions, um, some fees. So I don't know what the board's intention was for that.
Ten percent.
I'll have to know that. And then I think another section, uh, mentions, like, I can, uh, get a, uh, deposit. So not to exceed five thousand dollars, so I thought that was, I'm not sure how that process works. We probably have to set up maybe something to count, uh, or something like that.
I can find out.
That was a joke, just in case anybody was.
Well, according to Facebook.
I know, that's my, well.
Saying, yeah. Anyway, I'm sorry, Elena, you were saying?
I can find out. I know we take the deposits in escena, so I can find out from our, um, our finance department, who. I'm assuming they have a separate account, but they've set up for that. I think we set the fees though. Don't, do you remember?
That, that.
No, I think we did it separately.
I do remember this. Um, we had a discussion about this. It was somewhat discretionary at the, at the, um. Discretion of the, the code enforcement officer.
That's the deposit. The fees are set fee, if you have.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the deposit, 'cause I thought the deposit was based on the risk.
That, that is, but the, the fee, especially in the law, uh, I think it indicates that it's a fee set by the board.
It's set by board resolution, so that way you can change it by resolution without having to change the local law. I thought we did, I thought we did.
I'm bringing that law up right now, so just give me a minute. Do you remember what year we did it?
Be in the law, it'd be a separate resolution.
Oh. I can probably find that.
The final public review was the same time you canceled the meeting to discuss the dollar store. Because I came back for the public review and it was a week, a month late.
Dollars?
So it was, you had a dollar store issue with, uh.
Senior center, in the senior center?
July twelfth.
Oh, so that's when, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three?
Yeah. Was when the law was implemented or?
I think that's when.
So then it would have been either that same month or after, the month after that.
So I'm looking for the resolution on which one, property maintenance or junk vehicle?
It would be, it would have been setting the fee for the property maintenance.
No, it was property maintenance. It was this.
Oh, that's right. We did property maintenance and then we did vacant.
This is the vacant building registration.
Local law two of twenty twenty-three.
Local law one, uh, is the one I have.
Hold on, I got it.
Oh, we had, we had to renumber, didn't we have to?
We did have to renumber them.
Uh, is this vacant building registration?
Yes.
All right, I got it.
Yeah, but it's not in the local law.
It's in the resolution, right?
No.
Oh.
It's a separate resolution.
Oh.
It would have been if we did it.
It would have been after the fact.
Yes.
This was vacant building?
The local laws allows the board to set a fee by resolution.
Okay.
Unless we put it in the resolution as a separate.
Trustees shall, shall establish a fee for filing in the registration form.
I can go back through and check tomorrow. I just don't know off the top of my head.
That's fine, okay.
So we can get that on the agenda for next.
Well, I'll check to see if we did it already and then if not, we can do it.
Mark, is there anything else you wanna talk about in terms of the letter that you started to prepare? It would be easy for us to just forward it on to whoever's involved in. Code, Elena? I will send this to you right now.
The law is the guideline, you know, for doing all that, so. But, you know, that, one of my specialties for sure.
So, you know, after the person in question was asked, buildings being tore down, they found out through the records that. That person is living in a building without water and sewer.
Oh.
I did ask Denise about that the other day and somehow I'm gonna have to try and confirm that. We know he's living there. And, uh, Denise did say that there's no water reading.
And there's, Jimmy said that they cut the water on quite a long time ago.
Oh.
So, we all know he's living there.
Mm-hmm.
But he has cut off, uh, he doesn't have no post office box anymore. He does not have a, uh, mailing address. Uh, like a box or something.
Doesn't have a P O box in the mail.
So I've, I've gone to actually taping things to his door.
Mm-hmm.
And he does get them.
He's humping his tax bill.
Well, he's not paying his taxes, he has voided that school.
Hey, uh, who wants to be cced in the conversation about the, the letter preparation? Anybody else wanna be cced or just leave it to us? All right, we, see what's us.
And, uh, I think some of you guys are aware, but, uh, in that same case, uh, that, uh. And Kenny and Bruce witnessed this, but I was, I was accused of single-handedly causing an international incident.
So I just wanna say.
How's it feel to have all that power?
Mark, Mark, Mark handled it very well. I would have put it in the mouth. Um, he, he, Mark was called several derogatory names. Um, you know, he was threatened and he literally said that, you know, he caused an international incident by taking a sign up to the fence. And he just went on and on and I was just couldn't believe that Mark kept it cool.
Well, as I said to Mark, I'm very glad he kept it cool and I'm also very glad that there were witnesses there for that.
So we're getting closer to that, uh, you're gonna be hopefully approving the contract tonight?
Yeah, I didn't have this on the agenda, but it was something extra, which, um, is, uh, getting simply the, uh, a motion. Authorizing myself to execute the agreement for Dan's hauling. It's something that they, um.
Dan's hauling was already approved.
Yeah, we've already approved this. It's just a matter that they need a, uh, agreement. And we use the same agreements, uh, baseline that, that had been done in the past, back when we'd used Dan's hauling for either storm damage or woods broke or something like that. But, um, Elena drafted this agreement. It does include the sixty-three eight, which is the, the cost. And we had already went out for bidding and got this approved via bidding. So we have this agreement ready to go that our attorney is prepared and is good with. Which is in line with the, the one we had done previously. Um, and this is something that Dan's hauling requested is to have it under contracts.
So with that up to.
So.
To clarify, the board's already approved the expenditure. This is really just a formal contract.
Approving it.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yes, so we, so this was the one, this was one of two items I wanted to add to the agenda. Uh, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute this agreement with Dan's hauling.
Second.
All right. Um, it'll be an extra item, so.
Okay, so.
It's a motion authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Dan's hauling. And also for the record, since we've already mentioned it, um, this project was already bid out and approved by the board for spending. And as that was Doug and Bobby, right?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Aye, pose your attentions.
Do you have a copy of that, which you signed so that I can take that?
Shh, uh, actually, I do. I gave you a hard copy of that, so can I sign that and then?
Then I can get it.
Get moving on it right away. Yep.
So the, the window, uh, from Dan's is two to three weeks, once we have a contract.
Can you let me know so I'll have an extra officer?
You know, if by chance it is an international incident, maybe calling the FBI.
Yeah.
I think it was Homeland Security.
Do you want me to give this to Mark or do you wanna take it?
Uh.
Mark, she'll have it in the morning?
That's fine.
Perfect, all right. Thank you. Uh, we just did a motion to approve me signing this. Yes, okay, so we're all in favor. All right, great. Any other questions for, um, our code enforcement department?
By the way, I have done some cars, private properties.
You have already?
We've done a few cases.
Outstanding.
Um, the glass at fifty-nine, fifty-seven, fifty-nine. Have contacted him. Oh, okay, all right, yeah.
We did already approve that, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
Kevin?
Mark, any update on the Third Street properties? I went by the Third Street property, the one number six. It's actually hard to believe that it's worse today than it was a couple of weeks ago.
It is.
There's no access to the front, there's two front doors, no access at all. There's a path that goes to the back of the house. It's only two feet wide.
If that.
I mean, that's gotta be a, a fire hazard for only one egress and.
Elena, is, now, that, no one's living in there, right?
Yeah, they are living in there.
If, it, at what, at what point are we able to do something besides?
I need a, I need a court date.
Cite it, send it to the court and let, do we have to wait? We just have to wait for the court?
Yeah, let Mark talk.
Sorry, Mark.
I need a court date. I just got a, I just got a court date, might be earlier. I have a few cases I need to, I issued a citation the other day. Um, I need to get suspicious citations hopefully pretty soon before court dates early next month. Where I'm gonna start bringing some of these cases.
So the court's the one to authorize it. Yeah, Andy told me that as well. And it's always a challenge in December anyway, if everyone's schedules.
I goes back in the foreman, but it's, it's just hard. Uh, so anyway, with court date we have, like, and that one actually just came up on the pile the other day.
So one, sorry, Kevin.
I gotta, I, I'll go through and pick out the ones that I need to go for.
Did you get a copy of the local law from ninety-four for Cassie Armstrongs?
Ninety-four.
I don't know whether this has been overridden or changed since the beginning. This was, uh, Shelby. Shelby Law for a landlord or his agent to fail to remove solid waste, garbage, recyclables, or other household waste generated by the landlord, his agent, or tenant within seven days after the tenant vacates a set property. If the solid waste, garbage, recyclables, and other household waste remains on the property, fourteen days after the tenants are vacated, the village may enter the premises and remove the garbage and um the cost being re-leveled to the owner of the property.
What local law's that?
Local law number three of nineteen ninety-four. I don't know whether it, it didn't say whether it had been revised or not.
Clarissa, can you send a scan, a copy of that and send that to Mark, Elena, myself?
I think I sent everybody a copy of this.
Oh.
I don't, I didn't get a copy.
I did. And it may have been revealed to the one part of the law.
Well, we can.
But it also said failure to comply with the provisions of the act should result in initial fine of fifty dollars and an assessment of twenty-five hours per day for every day the owner is not compliant with the local law.
But then you still have to take it to court in order to get those fees assessed.
The case is in, the case is in my pile.
We're waiting on court date.
There's something I came across. Do you want, you want a copy of that?
No, that's, that's good. Yeah, pass that over, please. I'd love to copy that.
I have talked, I did talk to him. Uh, it's probably been three weeks now. I talked to the property owner and he promised me he was getting one.
Is that a one-family residence?
Our house?
No, no, the the one number six.
Yes.
Number six is the one.
In 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 regards to that, not nothing to do with you, Mark, but with John, they park, there's so much crap out in front of the house that they're literally, traffic is one lane. They're parking in the road. The people who live in that house that Kevin's talking about.
They parked the wrong way too. They parking.
Right, well, well, today they weren't. Today they were parked the right way, but they were, they're parked in the middle. I mean, literally, they're parked in in the right lane going up.
Well, that's, that's because they have so much junk in the front area.
Oh, I understand, Kevin. Oh, I know.
That's what you're saying, yeah.
No, I know exactly what you're saying. Believe me. I drive by it every day. I know. Um, but yeah, I was just wondering that today I had to go around and the school bus is coming down the other way, so I had to sit there and wait.
The city flies, so when it's left and the stuff's behind.
You can't even, one car, it's a one-lane traffic now because of all the craps out in front of the house and they parked the truck out there and it's like right in the middle of the road. In Vermont plate.
I don't know where all the stuff comes from.
Kenny?
So my question is, who's gonna have to clean that up if the village decides to, so like, yeah, so, which is fine, but, but, you know, my guys. I was gonna say, my guys are not gonna want to go in and clean up.
No, it won't be go, Kevin's not talking about going in, I believe, right? Kevin, you're talking about the outside, so.
No, Cassie Armstrongs, they just dumped all the stuff from back of the house.
I understand that, but I mean, who's to know if there's needs or what?
Yeah.
Oh, understood, Kevin.
So.
No, you're right.
I don't want to put my guys in danger.
The new, the new local law, the property maintenance code that we passed last year allows the village, I'm just reading here, the notice referred to subject property shall advise, if not corrected within the set five-day period, the village will proceed with the dispositions and violations following the notice period. There is an appeal process to the board that they have to file within so many days. After that, I think it's been just hired one guy to clean it out and assess them.
Yes.
That was my second.
It's contracted out.
If I, if I get my, if I get my guys in there and somebody gets hurt, who's gonna pay?
So a couple of quick things, just in in talking with Elena. Um, this really needs to be a longer meeting with Mark present, you present from the PD, Elena from the legal, a couple of us, but not enough for quorum so that we can sit for a couple of hours and talk through all this, get all the resources that we need to and have this conversation. These are important things, but they're, they're not gonna be as productive here in our board meeting.
And you can draw in the one on First Street as well.
Yes. Um, I'll hold on to this one.
Yeah, I got it.
So the, I mean, these are all good discussions, but we have to get all the right people in the right direction, all the things together, so.
Yeah, to share, to share on that First Street one, I went there to do a follow-up inspection and we were like, you know, they were in there, hear them in there.
Yeah. All right.
Do you need a bad windshield in the car? Can you just put the plastic on it?
Nope. We got two set of mirrors.
Any?
We got plastic in the van.
Any other questions from Mark?
No, Mark, I accept, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept Mark's report.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Poser abstent?
One more thing was uh.
Uh, we're can't, okay.
Mark, so I love this one. The, the chickens are running around on that, you must see them down by your house, they're on Forty Center Street. Chickens and a pig.
Chicken and a pig.
There's, no, there's, there's, oh, she has.
Wait, there's another pig? Or is that the same?
So we have a farm. The chickens are in a coop.
No, they weren't today. They're all running around.
Oh, they must have got them, so.
The whole yard looks like a pig pen. I mean, the mud is just.
Well, there's a pig, right?
All right, let's, let's keep zipping through since we're uh, we're behind. Uh, treasure report, is there anything you guys want to highlight?
No, so, oh, so the um.
Please.
The bills are not ready, but Denise sent me with.
The abstract's not here, but the bills are there.
We had some computer issues with QuickBooks this and Williamson Law are both this week, so we lost a lot of uh productivity and gained frustration.
So you guys, if you want to look through this, you can, uh, but she's gonna email you guys.
The abstract, the sign, right. I'm very.
Sorry guys, thank you. That's it.
Uh, looking for a motion to approve the treasure report?
I'll move.
All right, further discussion? That was Doug and Dan.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye or opposed? Uh, I'm sorry, abstentions or uh the the other one? Yeah, okay, moving on. We approved. All right, you didn't, I'm sorry. Clerk, anything you want to highlight?
Um, no, just processing water payments.
Looking for a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Bobby and Deb. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed or abstentions?
Thank you.
What's that?
The new FOI form.
Oh, work on the new FOI form, yeah. We, we have to review that with you as well, new FOI form. All right, thank you.
Is it gonna be Village ride or just?
Well, we can decide that. We can, we, we can have separate ones for PD versus Village as well. All right, uh, opposer abstentions? Carrie's, highway report, Bobby? Kenny, Andy, you want to highlight?
Um, we're just, you know, we're busy. I'm a, I'm a guy down for the month. I have a guy in National Guard. He's doing his monthly duty. This one, so I, Jimmy, Clean Water Department.
That's why I haven't seen him. Good.
Indeed, man. Still got my C D on. No, we're good.
Um, Kenny, there is a light that I think might be the village owns in front of Maggie Kenny's uh.
Beauty shop?
Beauty shop, across from the municipal building.
No, that's National.
Isn't it? Okay, cause I can't find a number on it and I've inquired about it.
John.
I reported that one too.
All right, I reported it multiple times.
And I went down to see those and guys like Kenny did, he went down and I went down too.
They laughed at you?
They just laughed, yeah.
Oh, they said they'll look into it there. As long as we're here, it might as well fix it.
No, I thought they got laughed at, so.
Yeah, that's National Grid.
I think the Public Service Board's the only way to go, cause this has been going on.
All right, cause it's been uh two weeks now.
So if you had, if you had outage for a streetlight, so the ones that are on Main Street or any of the others.
Kenny, any else you want?
Okay.
I have a form at the PD. We fill it out.
Okay.
If it's the bridge, right, Mark, the bridge is town, but then the others that look like those, they're on the Grand Street, yeah, and then.
Yeah.
Sure.
We work with the village.
Yeah, yeah, all the, all the green concrete poles with the, with the globe fancy lights are village owned. The black ones with the, the weird square, th- those are all National Grid.
I. Yeah. Okay, cause it doesn't have a number on it, you know.
Beautiful ornate top is what you meant to say there. There you go.
I give you a form and if they don't answer, I then send something to the Public Service Service Commission, the whole list of lights, and they appear and I die.
Great.
I will get that from them.
All right.
So, did we make the motion or did we?
I'm making a motion to accept highway report.
Uh, highway report, we need a second. Deb, thank you for the discussion. All in favor?
We have a plan in place for.
Wait, wait, hold on. Uh, all in favor? The aye, poser abstentions? Carrie's, Kevin?
We have a plan in place for snow emergencies this year. We're towing cars.
We do and we, he's already got the warning letter ready to go if we decide to do it and we didn't hit three inches thankfully.
I'm so excited.
And now we got Phil.
Yep.
Yep, all right.
Two wheels.
Uh, sewer department report. Um, Kenny, anything you want to highlight?
Um, just, I, I put on there that I was waiting for Seaworth to come out and replace the belts um on the linemen's pump station. So the belts are, were very noisy. They were out of alignment. I don't have the capacity to change them. They came out this last week. I've gotten several complaints from tenants around in there about it being noisy on startup and so they replaced the belts. They put them all in alignment. Um, I believe it was last Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So everything's nice and quiet down there, so we should be.
Was that why?
Should be getting pretty beers the same way.
Had it always been noisy before or more recently?
Uh, it, it depends. So, so, I mean, the belts are only good for four to six months.
Oh, okay.
So they have to be replaced every four to six months.
Okay.
I didn't know that until this time around when I got a different service guy came, came out and he said, Jesus, these belts are original. And I said, yes, since whenever we put those pump stations in, they go here.
Year and a half, I think.
They'll be for four to six months. And I'm like, is that why they smell like they're burning?
Oh, God.
So.
Add it to the list, all right.
Yeah, so they, they replaced them um Friday, so everything should be good for now.
Good, thank you. Uh, unless anybody has questions, I'm looking for motion to approve the sewer report?
Motion.
Second. Thanks, guys.
Uh, further discussion? All in favor of sewer report approval?
Aye.
Aye. Poser abstentions? Carrie's, water report. Megan wanted me to pass on a couple of things um down here on the recommendations. First off, our water guys are recommending that we take the Rogers Avenue storage tank offline. We know it's been leaking literally as long as I've been mayor and before, or since before that. We have pursued upgrades via grant. We've been turned down multiple times. We're gonna do it again, but in the meantime, they're feeling confident that even if uh, the tank is down, obviously that lowers distribution in that area and throughout the village, that we would be okay uh for a single structure fire or anything bigger. Obviously, you'd have to bring in more. Um, if you guys are good with that, they feel good with that, I'd like to try it for a month, but I'll make sure that we alert all of the fire people that they know what's going on and also to, to be aware for residents up there if they notice changes to water pressure.
Now, I don't trust their opinion because they obviously know the system very well. Maybe we should have an engineer look at that.
Robert Flores has uh felt the same way. He's actually from Delaware Engineering. He was one of the guys who had been involved in our water and sewer stuff, so he's already given the green light on that as well.
It's also one of his recommendations.
Yes.
Well, my question is, if that goes down and it is a country club fire, is Jim able to come in and boost the pressure to ensure there's adequate pressure?
No, you'll have to draw a water pump bottom of the hill and fill up tankers.
Yes, it is important. That's why if we do that, we have to make sure, but before we do that, we alert all of the EMS people locally, even probably nine-one-one, if there is a situation like that.
Cause the fire department's gonna have to change their box alarms for the business district to tanker box because that.
So we are not gonna do this until we've talked to fire department.
I honestly think you'll see a substantial difference in when you take that off. I mean, the water just pours out of that thing. It's ridiculous.
So we know that there's a large leak somewhere in the system. That's likely going to be it. And by turning that offline, we are likely going to save on all of the costs for, for handling water, chemicals, things of that nature, because in a sense we're losing all that water. So, all right, uh, I will circle back with you and Jim tomorrow and we'll start talking and you as well, so we can start talking about uh the other folks. The other thing is um sanitary pumps, uh, something has changed since this report. We have two pumps behind the water treatment plant that um handle filling up uh the tank. They're important for when the GAC changeout happens, the backwash.
They do a pump down.
Um, we replaced one of the two, which was like when we got the plant online. Those were original pumps. We replaced one for like seventeen or eighteen thousand about a year ago. The second one is on its way out. They made some setting changes and they feel comfortable with continuing to run with it for now and for the GAC change, but it's something that they want to throw up on the um, the radar. It's about a fifteen thousand dollar pump. It may be able to wait until this next fiscal year if other funds magically appear. Maybe we go ahead with that, but they wanted, and Megan wanted to make sure that we knew that that's a big deal and she is very much in for replacing that. I don't know if we right now have the funds to say go ahead and do it, but it is an eight-week lead time.
The company would be responsible since it's part of the changing material and the GAC.
Again, with water, you, you got like a four to five-year life expectancy expectancy on these pumps. I mean, you're just running water through a pump. It's a metal pump that's gonna rust.
But we're using it more because of the, the PFOA that's on that one, that D.
Hey, Dave.
Yeah?
We are using more of that uh pump and life because of the GAC changeouts.
I was just listening to that.
That is a great point, Kevin.
Uh, we can take that up with the companies.
Okay.
How much does this thing cost?
It's a, I actually have a quote. It's fifteen thousand, I think, and we've already replaced one. Um.
Pretty much about the same amount of money we spent this afternoon on one meeting with DEC. Yeah, get, get me something in writing. I'll say.
This is the quote from Evans, uh, who does this. It's fifteen thousand five hundred ninety-five. It's actually less than it was when we did it a year ago, but because prices have come back down.
Is, is this pump there simply because of the uh fall filter or is it there for some?
It's, it's actually the wash down pump that was there before any of the PFOA stuff started. It, it, it pumps everything to me at the sewer plant.
So it's part of the normal.
Septic, it's everything.
System, but because of the GAC changeout, it uses a lot more energy at that point.
And my, my second question would be, is that something we could purchase because it's a necessity and then, you know, um, you know, like, charge the whoever back at, you know, get our money back from that?
Later. That's another option. Um, it's not an emergency purchase because it is working right now.
Not yet, but eventually.
But that's something that we can talk to our environmental attorney about.
If it's, if it's something you need anyway, it's one thing. If it's something that you need exclusively because of the PFOA, that's kind of a layup. If, if it's, if it's, you know, getting through its useful life a little bit earlier.
This news story was written by Shayna Jacobs.
Just started by itself. No way.
Where's Shayna Jacobs?
Um.
All things. It's possessed. It is.
I heard some scary words in there.
No, 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 on this.
You know, if it's, if it's simply exhausting earlier because of the extra load, you know, that becomes one of those things that we throw in there on the, on the tab and see how it works out.
Okay. All right. So I don't want to act on this now, but I do want to put it on the radar as something we'll likely need to act on quite soon. Um, that's all I have for the water report, so unless anyone has anything else, I'd like to get a motion to approve the water report.
I'll move.
Thank you, Doug. Need a second? Thank you, Kevin. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poser abstentions? Since we just brought our environmental attorney in, do you guys mind if we skip over and come back to the minutes and then reports later and go right to some of the PFOA related business in the top of new business? Is that all right with you guys?
Uh huh, yep.
Dave?
Okay, I think I'll do it from here.
Take it away.
All right, here's where we are at and I'll fret and step through everything. We are still in the process of going through all of the regulatory steps with DEC for what will be the permits for the new water system. And it's been, it's been an arduous task. When I joked about how much this afternoon's call, probably because the companies, I was only slightly exaggerating. There were eighteen people on a conference call with DEC and DOH. It became apparent that there were parts of DEC who even at this little day don't know what other parts of DEC are doing. Without going into all the details, and there were many because it lasted quite a while, the goal now is to have all the permitting stuff done on or about the first of March, which would be useful. Because until that's done, actual construction cannot move forward. And the first step in the construction is taking down some trees on the route for the new pipeline. And those trees have to be taken down between now and the end of March because we have to do those, do that tree cutting at a time that is coincides with when the long, the long-eared bat
I knew that was coming.
Are hibernating. By the way, I have another case where the issue is the short-eared owl, so I, I tend to conflate these things, but uh, at any rate.
Can open up the door for airflow.
Long-eared cats are hibernating until the end of March. And so you can pet down whatever trees you want as long as they're sleeping. But once it's assumed they are about inactive, we couldn't touch these trees and the whole schedule for moving ahead with the project might have to then roll over till that time. And yeah, which wouldn't be till next winter.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we, there's, there's all sorts of process going on. Today was actually quite productive, even though, even though it was frustrating, so that's moving ahead.
And just, just to quickly step back from the big details, large picture, this is just one example of literally handfuls of tedious monotony that has to go into this, so I just want to mention that and thank you, Dave.
All right, I've been on more calls and video meetings than I care to recall and it, 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 it's been difficult. Uh, but that's about as much as I'll say on that. The um, while I was sitting here this evening, and this is, I don't know how you want to handle this, did I send you an email at some point?
Today?
No.
Oh.
It was in weeks ago with the companies requesting somebody from the village make a choice on the siding and roofing material. on the siding and roofing material for the new pump house.
That sounds like Kevin.
I don't know that, I don't know that anybody's actually gonna ever see it, considering that it's going to be on a landlocked parcel of a Route twenty-two outside of the village. But, uh, you know, apparently this has become a matter of some urgency because they wanna order the materials.
Same as this building. I get asked June tomorrow, um, the boys are bowling tongue, so.
I think this is an exact given level decision.
I think a nice brick siding would be nice.
No, they're not gonna do brick.
No, I think brick.
Fake brick?
Yeah.
I don't think that was one of the ideas. I, I, I was frankly a little surprised it was so urgent, but I, I will get that to you.
Uh I do have it, I will forward it to Kenny and to Jim and Josh and let them hash it out.
Okay.
That's the ten-page PDF with all the beautiful siding options.
Yeah, you know, it's, yeah, from a community.
It's, it's literally like a water room, and there's like this front porch facade looking like, whatever. Yeah, I'll forward it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for camouflage.
Well, I, I will say this about Honeywell and their consultants, they are diligent.
They're good, yes.
They are mindful of every detail. I've been very impressed with their, you know, vigorous pursuit of this. And without casting aspersions, St. Cobain is kind of along for the ride. So, there you have it. There are three resolutions here, and I will take them, uh, let's say in the opposite order, they're, they're presented here, okay? The, the third resolution, which we'll take first, was, is to retain three law firms, including our firm. The firm of Mike Stagg, who's down in New Orleans, and I think the other gentleman's name is Ken. This is for recovering funds from the National Class Action action that was brought principally by Mike Stagg as lead counsel against Three M, DuPont, and a host of other producers and distributors of PFOA and PFOS. And the first part of that settlement from Three M yielded eleven point five billion dollar pool of money. And the second part with DuPont yielded one point five billion dollars. That's not so much a function of, of, let's say, the relative culpability of those companies so much as it is an artifact of the extent to which DuPont, I don't know, is reached in corporate manipulation and chicanery to duck more responsibility than shows up in those numbers. There are still, I believe, sixteen actions pending against other companies who manufactured this stuff and distributed it. And those cases remain to either be tried or settled. But right now, there's a pool of about thirteen billion dollars. And the way this has been set up under this class settlement, the class, the class of, of plaintiffs would be any municipality in the country who has been damaged by reason of the release of PFOA, PFOS, or related substances into their water supply. Now, the vast majority of these plaintiff communities in, in that class are communities who actually used and handled principally PFOS within the context of firefighting foam. Huzik is kind of unique in that the entirety of the contamination problem here is due to the releases from, principally from the McCaffrey Street Plant. They've set up a matrix, and I'm not gonna try to describe the whole matrix. And I know Rob's looked at it, I've looked at it, it makes your head spin. And then there are these crazy calculations where you take the highest number that you had in your concentration of, of the biggest contaminant you had, then you take the second highest value you had, you take the square root of that value, you average a couple of other things, and, and then you measure it against the level of your water usage. At any rate, the guy who is the master of this is Mike Stagg, who's a very nice guy, I've had several calls with him, we've developed a bit of a relationship. He's the best guy in the country to have on the need for you. And my main achievement with him, I think, has been to talk him down from his normal thirty-three and a third percent contingent fee rate to twenty-five percent. There is probably several hundred thousand dollars out there that the village may be able to recover through this process. The claim, the claim papers have to be filed, I believe, within sixty days of finalization of the settlement of this thing.
Which has not been finalized yet.
It has not been finalized, everybody anticipated it was gonna be finalized in December. And the judge who's presiding on this, uh who is a federal district court judge in Charleston, South Carolina, still has not issued his final order. Stagg swears to me that it's gonna happen, that the judge is on board, but we're waiting for that, and then we have sixty days to get everything together. I've stepped through the information, and Rob has done a tremendous job assembling all this. And so I don't think it's gonna be a big lift to get it all together and get, and, and Huzik should be ahead of the list.
These are all of the sampling that has been done, uh, all the way back to the beginning of, of this. So this goes all the way back to twenty fifteen, fourteen? The very first samples broken down by all the chemicals that we're able to test for. That was a lot of fun to put together. And all of those are on the website as well for anyone, just as part of our normal testing regimen, so, sorry Dave.
So, there's a resolution that is authorizing the mayor to sign a retaining agreement with the three law firms. And once that's done, and once the settlement is blessed by the judge down here in South Carolina, the process will begin, we'll have a submission, and I'm guessing by probably March. And according to the schedule, uh, this may actually produce something within this calendar year. I feel somewhat safer in saying since it's January.
Yeah. Uh, anything else you wanna say about the other resolutions that we have up?
I can go through the other ones.
Sure.
There's the one, uh, the settlement with the three characters who sued the village. And I discussed this in executive session of the board, I think it was last month. And you will recall that each one of them sued for ten billion dollars. We have been in process on this for several years now. The village's insurance company, who requests that it remain nameless for the purposes of public discussion, has covered all those defense costs. We finally got these di, these guys to a point where they, basically, they said, "Well, you take, we'll take ten thousand dollars per hand." And anyone who's done litigation knows that when someone tells you that they'll sell for one one thousand of what they sued you for, you should take it, particularly since the legal process to go through the rest of this would, would far exceed that. So this is a settlement for nuisance value, and I've stepped through this with the insurance carrier. They're good with the approach we're taking on this resolution. And once that's done, uh, I will work with the plaintiff's counsel and make sure their settlement papers are in order. There's been one little hangup that they haven't answered to, which is one of the plaintiffs was of Medicare age, and we have to make sure there's no Medicare lien on the proceeds. And I asked them for this, oh god, I don't know, six weeks ago, and they still haven't produced anything. But I suspect that they are having a hard time with the law firm, uh, getting, getting motivated to work on a case in which their recovery's gonna be virtually nothing. So that's, that's another resolution, and we need approval on that so we can wrap this sucker up. And then the final thing is, uh, you will all recall that part of the deal we established with St. Cobain and Honeywell was that they established an escrow account with our firm. And we have used that to cover the costs of legal services and technical services for that entire permitting and other issues associated with the development of the new water system. And I will note that the other thing I, I omitted earlier, certainly marketing or whatever this, is that we have an application, application's now pending with the town of Huzik
Yes.
For open development approval for the subdivision. That's an approval that has to be made by the town board. And we have an application with the planning board for the actual subdivision approval. Because there is not sufficient road frontage for the new parcel. The parcel's essentially landlocked, and the access will be through a permanent easement. We need to go an alternate route, and the open development area process under New York State Town Law Section two eighty dash A allows us to do that. This is the cross parcel, which is, I think, fifteen or twenty acres.
And we're getting
We're getting three acres, that's where the wells are, that's where the pump house will be.
And the new siding.
And it'll be this fancy siding, and maybe with a mural on it, and
There we go.
And there's a history of murals in this town, isn't there?
There sure is.
And uh
Yeah.
We hope that that all gets through the town over the next month or two, and then everything can proceed, including at some point a closing at which Honeywell and St. Cobain will put up the money, and then title will pass directly to the village for this parcel.
So, and we were at the town meeting on, on Monday, there's a lot of just little things that are up in the air, but we're continuing to move forward. Uh, and it's going really, really well, so with your permission, I'd like to plow right through these resolutions, if that's alright? Uh, we'll start with the one he just mentioned. Uh, the first one, a res- resolution authorizing the payment of invoices through a third-party funded escrow account pertaining to the development of new water supply wells and associated infrastructure for the village. And again, this is, I think, our fifth type of resolution doing this. Uh, mentions the eighty thousand dollars initially in escrow, mentions the fifty, uh, seventy-nine, where's the number? Fifty, five eighty-nine, and seventy-one ninety-one, um, that will be reimbursed through the escrow accounts. I don't need to say anything else, right? It's good enough, alright, looking for someone to offer this resolution?
I'll move.
Thank you, need a second? Alright, further discussion? Uh, roll call vote please?
Yep, uh trustee Sheddick?
Yay.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Walrath is absent, trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen.
Uh, yeah, sorry.
Perfect.
Alright, so that passes, and I'll sign that, no, I don't need to sign that, that's what I'm sending him, alright. Uh, the next one
If you, if you can get that to my office tomorrow?
Yes, oh absolutely.
Trust.
We'll get all these to, to your office.
First thing.
Okay, fine.
Yep, alright, uh, second, we've already mentioned the resolution authorizing settlement of litigation. Is there anything you wanna highlight on here that you haven't said already?
Not really, all three of these people have moved out of the village, two of them were pretty dispecable.
In your opinion? Eh, is what it is.
They only lived here for a year.
Alright.
And they had
I know, I know.
They had massive health issues before they got here. And when I say massive, the double entendre is intended.
Gotcha, alright. So this summarizes that they each sued for thirty, or for ten million each, which ends up to thirty million, and the settlement is now ten thousand each, so thirty thousand total. Uh, the village's insurance carry is going to cover it, now therefore be resolved by the board of trustees. The village falls in special session one, the board of trustees. Uh, the village falls hereby approved the settlement of a litigation commenced by HCP claimants upon the terms and conditions set forth in the recital clauses which are expressly incorporated herein, and further authorizes Mayor Robert Allen and village's counsel on this matter, Dave Engel, uh, off counsel, uh, to Gilchrist Tingley, PC, to enter into and execute a settlement agreement in stipulation of discontinuance.
Discontinuance.
That one, consistent, I am having incontinence of the mouth, consistent with the foregoing recital clauses. Uh, need someone to offer the resolution? Thank you Kevin, need a second?
Second.
Thank you Bobby, further discussion? Roll call vote?
Uh trustee Sheddick?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Trustee Walrath is absent, uh deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen.
Yes, with a hearty thanks for all of the work that has gone into this. Very, very good, alright, and finally, uh, this is related to, the first thing we spoke about, the larger uh settlement claims related to the DuPont and three Amquise Fire Film Forming Foam. Um, he's already summarized this, and now therefore be resolved by the board of trustees. And who, uh, Huzik falls in regular session to the community's files, that this board of trustees has hereby authorized the mayor to execute a retainer agreement with Stagg Louisa LLC, the King Law Firm PLC, and Gilchrist Tingley PC for the purposes of providing legal services related to settlement claims related to DuPont and Three M, and the filing of a civil action for recovery of costs associated with damages to the public water system and or public wastewater system against certain defendants named in the Amquise Film Forming Foam Product Liability Litigation, MDL, whatever, with costs to be determined by a percentage of twenty-five percent of the gross amount recovered from such litigation, such retainer agreement being attached here to and made a part of hereof. Thank you, need a second?
Second.
Thank you Deb, further discussion? Alright, roll call vote?
Uh trustee Sheddick?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Trustee Walrath is absent, uh deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen.
Yes. Okay, we got through all of uh PFOA related stuff, thank you Dave. Onward we go, alright.
Rob, do you wanna let those two young ladies go?
Oh yeah, uh students, you guys are here for meeting purposes?
Yes sir.
We will sign whatever you need, so we can go, we normally do this at the one and a half, two hour mark, sorry. I know it's been riveting and exciting, bring it up to any of the trustees, please. Of course, you're welcome to stay, but no one ever, no one ever takes us up on that. Sorry. Alright, looking, uh, any issues with the December thirteenth regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to make a motion to accept what was presented.
Thank you Bobby, thank you Doug, further discussion? All in favor of minutes approval? Aye. Poser's or extensions? Carries. Alright, trustee reports, we're gonna go right down the line from Bobby Ryan across, so Bobby, what do you got?
I, I have nothing.
It is nice.
Other than what I said about the LED lighting and just waiting, we did sign, you did sign the IGA.
Oh yeah, I had it, I had it in the weekend prize.
Yes, and Denise emailed it, yes, so.
Yep, so we're, we're good there.
Yes.
Okay, he set the limit as one minute per report, Deb, you're on the clock.
Okay, um, that's the only things I've done, I mean, the things I've done.
See you guys.
Thanks babe.
Thank you. Stayed sorry.
I'm gonna drive as fast as I can.
So, I worked with Sergeant Hudson on that ticket.
That was great.
And I'm still working on the playground stuff for the fourth ward and the transfer station stuff, so I hope I have, I will be ready for next month.
I do have, um, the, or swam myself on the agenda, it's not a resolution, it's a motion, but I have that, so when we get there, we'll do it. Anything else Deb? Alright.
Thank you for working on the tickets.
Alright, Doug, you get more than a minute because of all the involvement in the four point five million dollar grant, so you take your sweet time.
So what I wanna do is, is just try to make sure everybody here has somewhat of an understanding of what's gonna happen with New York Board based on what we know now, because there's a lot of questions in the community, misconceptions, and we're the ones that need to straighten that out, so. As you know, it's a four and a half million dollar grant, um, that we had applied for a little over six million. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. It's capital money with some exceptions, uh, which could be like the branding and marketing, and maybe even some planning if it leads to a capital project. There are four state agencies that are gonna be actively involved. Most, if not all, contracts would be through them. Uh, so Department of State, which is gonna manage the process locally. Homes and Community Renewal for any housing projects and whatnot. NYSERA, which is gonna be interesting, will be involved, and Economic Development. So when we talk about contracts, and it'll be at the end of the day, it depends on which state agency you're gonna be working with. And it's possible like the Council of Arts or some of the other ones might be involved. The contracts are gonna be different pending the project and the state agency, so there's now one format, there's now one form of reimbursement, or how they're gonna work, it's gonna be divided up between the organizations. There will be a consultant team, unidentified as of yet, that will be heavily involved with us in, in planning it, There will be a consultant team, unidentified as of yet, that will be heavily involved with us in, in planning it and helping, well, I'll, I'll talk about this a little bit later. So there will be a, a local planning committee and that's made up of municipal folks, stakeholders, diverse community interests, quote unquote, and maybe some regional people. But this process was designed, the same process is for the city of Albany as is for Housick Falls. So it's much more complicated because of, they, they expect you to have all these resources.
Okay.
It's not clear who approves or creates that planning.
Okay.
And so that's a, that's a question. The Regional Economic Development Council folks, this is the folks out of Troy, will be a co-chair. Somebody from there, we don't know who that is. And then a, the elected official will be a co-chair. So it's not clear what they mean by that either. Um, so, so just to be clear, there's us, there's this planning committee that will be mostly community people. There's a regional economic development guy that will, or woman, that will be involved. The Department of State will have a contract manager who will coordinate everything with all the state agencies and is to be our point person.
Is that who we met up in Lake George?
If, or his office.
Okay.
Out of Department of State. And then there's a consultant team. So there could be four or five people around in this project that has to be boarded, plus probably a fifteen, twenty-member local, local committee. The local committee is the one working with the consultant team and the state in finalizing projects. So the first thing that they're gonna do, you know, there's gonna be between five and six meetings, and this is gonna be over a four to five month period, so it's gonna be two or eight times.
Okay.
Um, they're gonna start off with the consultant developing a public engagement plan. So that's gonna be social media, the Facebook page, public meetings. There'll be two to three, out of those five to six meetings, there will be two to three public hearings. Okay, so they're gonna have the, the local planning committee meetings are public. And then they're gonna have public hearings also occurring. And again, public hearings will all be coordinated and managed by the consultant. So we gotta envision here that this is gonna be, or could be a very open process.
Yep.
One of the first things they're gonna do after they do that is they're gonna develop a profile and assessment of our downtown area demographically and business-wise, which will be pretty good for us and actually could be a model for expanding it out to a comprehensive plan. And look at some of the other models, they, they do a good job, pulling in the data and whatnot. They will look, our vision statement, some of it's gonna be a rehash of what we already done, our vision statement, does it work? What's our goals, what's our strategies, that's tied to, um, the state goals and the regional goals, and we know that pretty well is already there. And then they're going to develop and evaluate projects. So the projects we have already put in the proposal, try to get fast-tracked for consideration. And each project will need to put a form in, quote unquote, to Department of State, that's an application. And that, that process, I, I, the way I'm reading it is the state and the consultant will determine, do these projects meet the criteria? And if they do, then they will provide direct technical assistance for those proposals to be generated. So the public work projects, they'll work on and they'll connect with what's my funding source. The private projects, they will work directly with you to put together the proposals. So it's not like everybody's out there just finding their own way of putting the proposal. They will also consider, after the first meeting or so, whether or not there's any boundary change. Whether or not there's anything that is immediately adjacent to our existing boundary, where a project may be of value and we can change at that point in time with the state approval. So there could be a change here. I'm thinking of even like the Stewart site or over there, you know, you could add a little bit of an adjacent site to it. If you have projects that you want to put in there for that purpose. Then they're gonna get into detailed project profiles. This is the piece that just gets into each of the projects. Now, the key to this is that there's four and a half million that will be granted. They want the proposals that come from the community, that the local planning committee consultants and the state folks that are already involved have written off on, to be much more than four point five million, because they don't want any one project to be declined at the end of the day by the state, and then that's essentially below four point five million. So essentially, it's gonna be a competitive process within the community. It's not us putting, you have four point five million, the committee approves it, and it goes off to the state. They, they want six, seven million. And probably our big, um, unknown is around the Oak Mitsuwi property, because that could be a little bit of money, or it could be two million. We don't know. So straightening that out is, is gonna be a process. The, the other piece about this is even though we got all these hands in these projects, once it gets recommended to the state, the package, which it then goes to a multi-agency state review process, who then makes the decision, project by project, what they're gonna fund and what will be in the four point, four point five million. So what we recommend is getting, gonna be decided over at, by another level, which is unusual, because you got the state heavily involved in the whole process from the beginning, and then there's some other process at the state level over and above it. Once the projects are approved, that's when they will then develop contracts with each of the project sponsors. So the village would have a contract for all the public projects. Each of the, if it was a nonprofit or a for-profit business, they will have their own contracts. And they re, and, and the structure, as I'm saying, reimbursement is going to be based on whatever the, the state agency funding stream wants to do. One of the interesting things here is that it does look like they will, demolition is included. We were kind of told that it wasn't before.
Okay.
Um, so demolition is included. I think, actually, there was a paper, article at the Times-Juni, the other day, about Hudson getting the DRI money to demolish the shanty, the river shanty towns. And, you know, those shanty.
Yeah.
And they got that money in two thousand seventeen, and they're using it now to demolish that. Yeah, so, so much for shovel ready. And they are saying, unlike what we were told upfront, that there had, to be, for us to be competitive, we had to have a match for private project, like fifty percent. The rules right now is there's no match requirement, except for the small fund, there's a twenty-five percent minimum, unless the local planning committee establishes a match requirement. So that might, that might be an interesting thing, because everybody was told you have to come up with a match.
Right.
If you're for-profit business and whatnot. So that might change how people may be thinking about this, but that's up to the local planning committee managed pretty well by the, by the consultant and the regional economic.
So wait a minute, so the projects we originally proposed in our application?
Yes.
They may not happen?
No, the project.
Could be other ones?
The project, the projects we originally proposed are kind of in line first. There will be an open call for projects from the community after the first LPC meeting and after the first public hearing. That's what they're planning. There'll be an open call for any additional projects. And then, then they're gonna vet all the projects, including the ones that we have. But I think the way they, the, the process duplicates what we have to some extent, and I think that allows them to kind of get ready, set, go. They already got the vision, they are, they do fine tuning, they already have a set of projects that they kind of like already, but it will be open to other projects.
So the, the projects that were in the application get a certain amount of deference?
Yes.
There's no guarantee.
Because they're already in the pipeline.
Correct.
But then we look at that line. Again, you could, you could, you could amend the, um, the geographic focus areas that had a project, or the existing projects would ask for more money because they don't necessarily have to put up a match, that they thought they would have to put up a match.
We had stuff in the proposal that was empty, like Oak Mitsuwi.
Yes, yeah.
So.
But we're gonna have to work that out really quickly, I think, because that's such a big, it could be a big project. It's one of those things, I think we need to work it out first, so we know what's left.
Yes.
Or if there's a lot left.
So if I'm hearing you right, and I'll just take two ends, uh, two extreme ends. We have Oak Mitsuwi, which we don't even own the property yet, and we, it could, you know, we have no idea on design and lots of limitations, so that's. And then on the other side, we have the municipal little project that we already have a floor plan on. So that, that technically is shovel ready, although we are gonna probably want to make a couple tweaks on it. We could still do slight redesigns on the municipal building one, and that one still could happen, because it's pretty close to shovel ready, but there's still a lot of process before we get to that point.
Yes.
He said demolition, I mean, do you?
Well, yeah, demolition and parking. If parking is tied to the economic development and new investment, you can, you can use the money for parking as well.
So what if someone had a project idea that either was not included in the original or is in addition to a project that's already there? Is that something that could actually go through this?
Yes.
So Doug, if you're adding parking, like say there's a lockdown on the Sandbar, you use that?
Yes.
You can't use it for acquisition, though, right? The money?
You can't use it for acquisition, you have to use some other money for acquisition.
No, I invited Mitsuwi, Kevin, you mean? The one between behind the company is down to, actually, it's on, on the other side. Oh, on the John Street side. Mrs. White's property. Yeah, I know, I mean, yep, yep.
Or if there are other properties near there that we could acquire if the owner wanted to do that with us.
And do parking.
It won't cover acquisition, but we could use that for parking.
Yes, because we originally told, no, 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 only extreme. Now they're saying if it's tied to your new development.
Okay.
Because if you're, you, you need parking if you're doing anything of significance.
Yeah, and we've already put the money in for parking study and it's.
I think Mrs. Mrs. White, the owner, told me it went, maybe like fifty-eight thousand dollars for that property. Wasn't too bad. Goes all the way back to, um, Bob Decker's house on the other side on Spring Street there.
The other piece is you can put together projects that rely on other funding that's either secured or they're gonna have to feel it's a good chance that they're gonna get, I'm thinking of like Jason's properties looking at. And their money can be used for match, but that's a more complicated, you're really gonna have to show that this is gonna happen.
So you get the money after you do the work, or does?
It's up to, it's reimbursable. So they're not saying, I mean, we've been told different things. I think economic development, state economic development says they reimburse after you've completed the project, which means you only have to put seven hundred thousand dollars and then figure out if, if you're needing your approval.
Which is the private.
Or, or some of them may be quarterly. I think they told us public projects, it's reimbursable, like quarterly or something, as you spend. But there's no clear answer, because it depends on the funding source.
Is there like a clerk of the works that goes around and makes sure all the projects are done?
The Department of State, I, I think a couple of things. The Department of State is gonna have the point person that manages the consultant team and is our point person. So it's, it's gonna be a little confusing who you're relating to, where all these people are. But it's clear the Department of State is the manager of the project. They want, they want an elected official or the elected official to co-chair the, um, the planning committee. And then they want one designated from the village who is gonna be the point person for all information regarding everything to go through. To communicate with the manager, which is the Department of State. Now, I, I think that, that's more made for, like cities have the community development office and.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we have to figure out how.
Some villages have a village manager.
Manager.
Yeah.
As well, sometimes like Green Island, I think even has like a full-time one, so a part-time mayor but a full-time manager.
Okay, and at the same time, we have to have administrative infrastructure, which are, how do we manage this?
Can you hire an administrator out of the grant for help with that?
Uh, it's not clear. I think we were told once it could be like ten percent, but there's nothing that I've seen that gives a percentage. We have had somebody volunteer. I don't know if I can mention that.
I wouldn't right now, but anything like that would have to be vetted and see what their connections could be to anything in the projects.
I think the key to us is get our act together on how we're gonna manage this, who are they gonna be people? Not wait till the state gets in here, or when the consultant team are five or six, seven people, who knows? And then we're trying to figure it out. So I think we need to prepare that now, we probably need to prepare the current projects to, to, for what they may need to be ready to expect, because people don't know, you know?
Yes.
It's confusing for two years, who's doing what and what's expected. Now we got some guidelines, but from my perspective, we'll all be driven, subject to change at another time.
Yeah, and it's nice that we got it and that we're not the first round, because we're already benefiting from what they've, the state has learned in the process of going through the first round, so.
It's a good thing they didn't give us money last year.
It's, 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 it was meant to be, meant to be.
Yeah, we were.
I, I was also told that they, they really weren't gonna do the, the two and a quarters anymore, because the administrative cost was, just didn't make. It did, it wasn't enough money to be transformative, and then you essentially doubled your administrative cost.
Well, they essentially did it for Lake George, because two and a quarter went to the village, and two and a quarter went to the town. And they came in as a partner.
Okay.
Wait for the.
That was the original proposal.
Wait, can Lake George get a different one?
They got the DRI, but I think it was upgraded. Yeah.
That was ten million, they got. They got.
Oh, they got.
That was the DRI one.
Yes, oh, DRI.
That's upgraded, yeah. But originally, it was either two, four and a half, two, four point five million, or one, four point five, and two, two point, two fives.
Yeah, if you look at it, they're getting ten percent, and they being the consultant team, because there's ten million dollars in the region. They're giving the local communities a total of nine million. There's a million dollars that they're keeping, or whatever they're doing, the consulting team and that kind of stuff. So there's, they're making their money. I can see they, the less contracts, the less communities, the more they're making.
Career change?
That's right, that's what I was told the day, it was just.
Is that?
It also wanted to be transformative, and then you essentially doubled your administrative cost.
In a moment, yes.
The other thing I thought was interesting, talking to a friend of mine who, who got his mayor of place, I, I gave her under there, God, I love this here. Oh, did she?
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, we'll hear tomorrow. She was, the one thing I thought was interesting in just talking to her was how strict they were about the composition of the committee. Like the, I think when you say the elected official, what she told me is one elected official.
Yeah, yeah.
One. Like they do not want it to be a, a board function type thing.
Yeah, but they want municipal representatives to also serve and help coordinate and do things, but that's assuming you have all the staff, municipal representatives.
Right.
Right. I mean.
Yeah, we're so, we're overstaffed.
Yeah, we're all volunteers, you know?
Yeah.
You don't want to achieve a staff, Bobby?
So listen, I know we're long into meeting, but this is an important discussion, it's important to have this on the record, and we're already looking ahead to ways we can get the information out of the community. Joe, you had a question as a community member, so fire away.
Thank you. Um, how big is the LPC? When does it get into place? How does one get appointed? And is there a, um, restriction on people who have projects being on it? And I asked a bunch of questions, because I figured at least three of them are, we don't know.
Yeah, well, we don't know. They don't say any outside. They kind of give this broad thing, they give all the stakeholders diverse interest right now. You, you can have project people because there is a conflict of interest provision, that you have to recuse yourself from anything that affects materially real or perceived, which is a good conflict of interest.
Good.
Recuse yourself from any decisions or opinion regarding things. And pretty much, I don't know how to participate and not have an opinion about somebody else's project. But we don't, I, it will, they're gonna convene after, and this is, this is the urgency, because once they say we're ready to do, let's say it's gonna be February, they wanna move very fast, and we're gonna have to create one. I mean, we have a, we have a bit of a body. Um, but I would, I would say we probably need to get some more non-project-related people involved.
Yeah.
I want to.
All right. When we get that information out, we'll make sure you get it.
But it's gonna be ready, set, go, and, and if, I think we're gonna need to try to drive the car as much as we can and not let other folks come in and drive the car.
I feel like it's gonna be ready, set, why haven't you guys done anything yet? Just get the feeling. All right, anything else you want to add to this?
I, I would just add, when you talk to people in the community, the process is gonna be totally transparent. So I know folks are saying it's an inside deal, people are getting money on the inside.
No.
Group vacation.
I'm picking up my new Beamer this week.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rob, can you send a video with the online, explaining the, some of the projects? Wouldn't that be helpful, maybe?
I think so. I'd like to, I'd like to talk to you about what kind of things we want to get up online as soon as possible.
The proposal.
Um, I will get the proposal online tonight or tomorrow, I'll put it up there. I could even talk, we can even talk through the slideshow as a quick video, it's an easy thing to do.
But it's good for folks to know, these are just proposals for us to compare and to get the award, and now it goes through a whole nother process where everything gets vetted.
It's been a learning curve for me, and I've been working with you for a bunch of months, so. It's been a learning curve for me and I've been working with you for a bunch of months, so people who haven't been in on the whole discussions, they're gonna be very confused.
You know, maybe our first video is, we just basically walk through the presentation like we did in that Zoom meeting
We're confused.
Exactly.
and then we can talk briefly about some of the next things that are coming and that will be a good first video to get out to the community. All right, awesome. Thank you. Your report cannot be that long.
Yeah.
Might have hours with the stuff we're talking about. Um, did we get the, um, the capital EAP? Did we get that submitted, the signed contract?
Yeah, that was.
I know you signed it. Is that, was that the capital EAP?
That was the employee systems program we approved last time and I signed.
Those were the last few.
Yeah, just because.
Sign, um, let me just double check. Where, where is it getting sent to?
Once that's. Uh, capital EAP.
It was on, it was on.
It's capital REAP, Capital District Council, so it's the parent company.
Shoot us a response when you know what.
Yeah.
What is it? Family Council, Family Council? Um, once that's received by them and it's set up.
Do you know about that?
No, that's why I'm listening.
We approved it. It's gonna be.
So I just checked the box.
Yep.
I'll give you, I'll give you the Reader's Digest condensed version. Got capital EAP set up for all, all of village employees, like up to thirty-five. Um, includes the first responder program, which is just a separate, um, you call up ID assistance, if you're, in our circumstance here, it would just be the police department, it'd send maybe a different channel or something, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, but once that is, uh, set up, they will send us, uh, materials and stuff and I don't mind volunteering to be the guy to go around and hand them to the various departments.
Yes, because I'll need that for the new policy, because that's part of the state's plan.
Yeah, there's.
There's a kind of rule.
There's like flyers to.
Policies, so I have to put that in there.
Oh, for the accreditation?
No, for just having a, in the policy book, that's gotta be in there.
Oh, okay.
It's one of the mandates.
A wellness, is that EAP or?
Yeah, it is.
Is there like a wellness, is there like a gym membership?
No, it's not, no, not that, it's like mental health and all that stuff and offering services.
That's exactly what that.
Addictions or.
Um, I just wanna mention one other thing that, um, you know, that I guess relates more to the police department stuff, but it's been probably more specifically, but one thing I've been doing in some places setting up is, um, the sort of program where if, if an employee seeks inpatient, it ends up in like an inpatient mental health, the municipality pays your salary for up to thirty or sixty days. The reason behind this is that there's some statistics that have come out, um, especially really more surrounding first responders, but really anybody that there are a number of people out there, suicides and such, they have not sought help because of the detrimental effect on their pay and their bill pay bills and stuff, so. Yeah, so it's, I just, I just got one approved and it was pretty much the other day, and one of the guys that was, one of my members, his daughter had committed suicide. She was a paramedic and committed suicide like two years ago, so he then went out, got an EMT card and got into it, so he was obviously very emotional to hear that, but it may be something we may wanna look at as sort of a village policy to do something along those lines, because the last thing we wanna do is find out that someone didn't get help because they just didn't afford to.
Actually, it was a pilot, it was pilot, the pilots. It was about pilots and weren't, anyway, I'm backing up here.
Yeah, no, it's just, I think it's good policy today, there's a lot more, um, um, you know, just focus on mental health issues and and it's, it's not as easy as just saying you need to go get help with me. Okay, how am I gonna pay my bills? Like, that's great while I'm there and I'll see Phil telling my car away or something, you know, I mean, it's just, so. Anyway, just, that's all I got. So once, once that gets set up, I'll, I'll peddle the, um, information around and then.
Great.
John, I'll get you stuff on the EAP or the capital, first responder portion of that.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
One, one quick question, the, um, you're, you're still working on the, the, um, village policy book or that's done?
Yeah.
Yeah, bigger than you thought, aren't you?
Well, you know, one of the things about that is that, um, I looked at the, the, the one temp, I've, I've got a couple templates. One of them, yeah, you gave me and that is pretty widely distributed. I, I, I've got some templates from other people in the office and I happened to notice that same one was out there a lot, so I'm really afraid of like, um, claims of copyright infringement or whatever, so I've got one that's really good from a defunct company. They're gone. They don't exist anymore. And I haven't read it as a, I haven't seen it in a, in a mirror image in another company, so I'm using that as sort of the template, um, I think it, it'll be safer.
Makes sense.
Splicing in certain things about the civil service law and then I'll, I'll send it to you for review, but, um, yeah, it's a major project. It's, there's just no way around it. It's, it's just, it's enormous.
Yep. Thank you.
And it's also been the end of the year, which, you know, the union contracts, both ninety percent of them expire on December thirty-first, so it's my busiest time of the year, which is actually slowing down now.
Like my concert season, yeah.
It, it is, everybody, it's like being a tax preparer, I mean, what are you gonna do between March and April, you know?
Yep. All right. All right, thank you, Dan. Kevin?
I talked to Cindy Brewster the other day and she's, um, almost done with the appraisal of the town property.
Great. Great.
She got a little concerned because she saw the history of Mr. Catanio suing people, she said, I'm not gonna sue over this, am I? So, but anyway, uh, once she's done, I asked Elena what the process was after that and she can explain what happens next once she gets that.
Yeah, I meant to bring something for tonight's meeting and just with everything going on, I forgot to, so I will email it out.
I threw like six resolutions at her, so.
I can email out the, like, step-by-step process so that way everybody knows for an minute domain proceeding.
That'd be great.
What to expect.
Now, how long, once we get that filed, how long does that take again? Are we talking like two years?
I wouldn't say two years, but it's gonna be several months, depending. The problem is, is you get the appraisal and there's an offer made and you can move forward even if the offer is rejected, but then they can later sue to try to get more than what was offered. It's, you know, it's kind of a, if this happens, then this kind of flow chart process, so it's hard to say exactly how long start to finish, but.
So is it possible we could know within five or six months?
I would say probably closer to the six months end of that.
Because it could be a New York Ford project.
It could be.
We originally wanted to go for that.
So if he doesn't answer the.
I'll, when I send it out, it'll make senses, but it's like, it's more of like a flow chart type thing. This would be the step, but if this happens, then you kinda go to this step kinda thing.
Choose your own adventure book. That's exciting.
Just, um, just jumping in real quick, Andy was talking about it last year or whenever, my understanding was that the initial, um, port, the initial part of it is the, 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 the property rights are handed over. That if there's a dispute, it must, I'm totally wrong.
No, I know what you're gonna say in your.
The money, if there's a dispute over his valuation, our valuation, that gets litigated.
Yes.
Sort of acts as fact.
But so I guess, but as far as a timeline, there's the portion of it that's like to move forward with this, but then that, it might not end there, you know what I mean? There might be further litigation, so I can spell all of that, I can give you an idea.
Uh, you know where the sidewalks falling in next to Beestown?
Oh, yeah.
And the rail trail that we know.
There's one person who owns four properties there, um, that has.
The mistake person.
Actually, the picnic table and the benches and everything in that area, that's owned by a, a private person, so. The state, the state got a temporary right away and then they just never got a.
Untemporary, right.
All right. Kevin, what else?
The other thing is curb cuts. We're looking around for a permit and we finally found it in the village office in that rack that has all kinds of paperwork stuffed in it.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I think it needs to be updated. It still has Neil's signature on the bottom.
Can, can you pass that down so I can take a look at that?
I made a whole bunch of them.
Oh, fantastic.
But it's not, it's pretty vague about, you know, what you wanna do, it just says utility driveway work permit application, doesn't say anything about what does ask for paperwork, but I think it should be more specific to sidewalks, curb cuts, driveways and things like that, utility work or whatever. But I gave it to Kenny, Kenny's gonna take a look at it and, uh, make some modifications if he sees any.
I actually brought it home with me, I was out the second last week, I've been looking at it and I've jotted down some ideas and stuff and I'll get ahold of you this, this week or beginning of next and, you know, I'll let you know what, what I think and, you know, got some ideas.
So as down there, I was talking to Denise, I said, how do you know when somebody's doing a, a project in our fifty-fifty program? She goes, well, I don't. I get, we get the bill for the cement, I just pay it, so.
DPW is always.
She, she calls me and then I, and I tell her what, what is going on.
Yeah.
But there's no paper trail, there's no.
There's no paper.
Not really, no.
So this should be part of it and also should be a, maybe an outline of what the program is, because we don't have, I couldn't find anything on what our program is, there's no thing saying.
The fifty-fifty matching.
What, what the village will do and, you know, what they will.
Yeah.
Is this possible for?
Historically, from what I've learned from Neil, which isn't very much, um.
Fair enough.
So the village, the village will tear out the old sidewalk and we will pay for the concrete. The homeowner has to come in and they have to have, whether they do it themselves or they have a contractor come in and they have to do it. And there's been, that I knew of, no guidelines on to what kind of mesh you have to put in the sidewalk or anything, that just left up to them and most of the time they get like petipitis or, or, um.
Tracy Moore.
Tracy Moore, you know, who is a contractor, a concrete guy and they know what they're doing, but I mean, you do get homeowners that do it themselves and they just kinda just wing it and, you know.
There was, um.
We talked previously at a meeting and I think you were recommending that we could require they use a contractor to have their insurance.
Yes, well, they have, yeah, historically, any contractor that works in the village has to have a certain amount of insurance and, and, and maybe Clarissa knows, but I think Denise knows, I think it's like a million dollar bond or something like that.
Yeah, the last thing in the paperwork is the village superintendent has the authority to, uh, to order the contractor to tear out any work or not meeting requirements of the village. In the event of this occurring, all cost of the concrete will be the contractor's expense.
It's a little rough.
Wow.
Can I get a pistol for me?
No, which really leads to the curb cuts that have been taken out of the town. I mean, when people are doing curb cuts, they should really be doing an application on that.
Yeah, and it would be easy to get names, address, parcels.
I took Doug for. I took Doug for a ride around town, a lot of the places that just ripped out their sidewalks and put driveways in and.
Amazing.
We should, we should really have a more comprehensive curb cut driveway sidewalk regulation. A lot of the ones I saw in different towns have specs, but you can't pictures of how the, the much also can.
Maybe since Pat has been, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, do you want me to send you what we have in this unit?
Yes, please.
I, I think I sent a sample to.
You should send it to Kevin as well.
Okay.
Um, maybe with, uh, since Pat has been the one who has done so many of the sidewalks for the village or through the fifty-fifty program, we can get his take on things too.
I also, I also talked to Kevin too, that wasn't in the, that wasn't in, I didn't see anything in the, in the paperwork you gave me about the handicap access up there too. This should be, this should be made mandatory.
Yep.
You know, of, of intersection, you know.
Yeah, with EDA requirements.
Back when Neil explained to me the fifty-fifty program, there was a second option, but nobody ever took it. It was always the option that you explained with the paying for the concrete and the contractor, that there was another option, but no one ever did it, so it was always.
I had never, and I've looked through all, again, what little paperwork I have, I've never found it, kind of what, by what we, you know, by, historically what we did.
Yeah, went through all the local laws and who knows, it probably dates back to the forties when they came up with that then.
We still have an ordinance on the book on how to hit your horse, so if you're interested, I could find that for you.
I mean, it, it, it would make sense to, to maybe try to figure out a, 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 a policy, you know, like the fifty-fifty policy.
Absolutely.
It must be easier.
Give her good assurance for the contractor.
Or resolution. Proceed any prior.
Yeah, yeah, we could, she said we could, the resolution we could put together would supersede any prior, so just keep on. That's great. Anything else, Kevin?
No.
Awesome. Thank you, very good stuff. Uh, we have no old business. We have zipped through the first page of new business stuff. Um, I have a motion that I'm looking for that will authorize the mayor to execute the three-year retainer renewal agreement between the Village of Crusick Falls and our longtime law firm, Homer Walens Gold Minot and Elaine Gold, for the term of January one, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. We already talked about this in email. We had to get it done before the new year, so we did it. So this motion and vote will be retroactive December thirty-first, but it puts us on the record.
So moved, okay, second.
So that was, uh, Doug and then Bobby. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed or abstentions? Great. Pass as carries, thank you. We already did the new local proposed law, so that's already set and the public hearing is already set. Um, did we wanna discuss anything else with junk car and vacant property registry laws?
No, but, um, maybe we can send out letters to, so that we have the addresses of these property owners to send out letters, a warning letter, like an amnesty program between now and April first, here's our law, if you're not complying, we're gonna start enforcing it.
I think that's a great idea. That's a great idea.
And with that, we, we probably should really, in the forcing of prioritizing the worst case, people have three, four cars.
Smashed up.
Yeah. And once we start doing it, people will get the message.
Yep.
That being said though, so, so you're saying the village send out a letter, you're saying, right?
And then that's water bill.
So people know.
Well, again, actually, again, came up with a letter already, but I just drafted a draft. I think, I think I sent it to you, Mark, right? Was it a draft letter for the, um?
Is this the junk car?
The junk car stuff.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
But what I'm asking is, so, so the village is gonna send it up, I mean, we, we can't put more on Mark to, to, to have him do administrative stuff. If we're gonna do that, we gotta make sure we, we get some administrative help from Mark for someone, even if it's the girls in the office to do the letter, you know.
Actually, actually, I'm willing to do, put send a letter out myself. I have all the information.
I was gonna say, if all we need is the names and addresses.
Oh, we use a blank, we got the letter, right? Yeah, we just use name and address and put them in, mail them out, that's what I'm saying.
So there's, there's a place right here on the corner that keeps bringing in more and more, there's gotta be now ten.
I noticed that, driving by there, I noticed that today. I was like, oh, junk, junk stuff, junk cars. Kenny?
So who is gonna know what, what makes a junk car? I mean, is it?
There's a definition in the law.
It's defined.
Unregistered, uninsured vehicle or a car with a broken windshield or something to get fixed, I mean.
He's got the local law right there, if I read through it.
I haven't.
There's, so, there's, there's, there's two things. There's a definition of what constitutes junk cars. Broken glass, sharp glass, leaking gas and other hazardous fluids, um, the existence of one or more conditions such as not limited to deterioration of rust in the body, deterioration exterior finish of the vehicle, broken windows, absence of component parts of the vehicle. There's also a remedy too, so if you show up and say, Kenny, I think you got a junk car here, oh, no, no. Start it up, you move it twenty-five feet on its own power, you're good to go.
Right, so, and I'm not signaling anyone out, I like Gordon Frisky, he's got about twenty cars behind his garage that are broken down, leaking.
Yeah, but that's, that's an actual, the law, yeah, the law has junk car lots that are in business of.
And, and I'm just for instance-ing Gordon, I mean, I like more.
It also reflects historical vehicles, so we think the former deputy mayor, he's got his jobs and he's working on it.
Well, that are under car covers.
That are, right, that are, that are appropriate, right? What we're talking about here is my neighbor is staff, like over here stacking up cars in their yard that have, I mean, some of these ones, they have no purpose, I mean, like the one that we took out. What's that?
Like the blue one.
Like the blue, like the turquoise, blue one is a great example.
I love that we moved it down to the highway department and moved it back up.
But now it's gone.
There's been a place up by.
On forklift, right?
Up on Abbot's who were deadlifters too, I mean, even under our old law, that having two cars was illegal, they could have one, but now.
It is, boy, they don't know what to do.
All right.
I mean, there's, I see that point, I think I'm saying cars, cash for cars.
They're the junk guy, he's a big dude, big dude.
So when the letter goes out, who do people call? I'm adequate, because that's pretty good, dude, you're gonna get calls from people, the way this is about, if I, who they.
Or lucky will get called, or not lucky will get called.
I'm, I'm really, I'm serious.
No, I know what you're saying, yeah. Who would administratively they gotta call and?
Yeah.
Well, these are the things we need to work out when we get the letter created.
The thing that makes the most sense is the Hasselblad shoe code, because it's the first step in the process.
I agree.
Where they may end up in court.
And I think.
That becomes a, the court case.
And I think this leads to a bigger, you go first.
I just, I, 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 I just disagree on, on that a little bit, Mark, because like other municipalities like Troy, if it's unregistered, it's gone. There's no court, there's no judge, it's gone. Uh, the law allows so many days to, to remedy it and it's gone. It's a call to Phils. I, I, every other municipality I've seen, they don't even allow that, it's gone.
What's that?
For that specifically, but if we're talking about the vacant property.
We're talking about junk cars right now.
So, I mean, part of the, part of this local law list did not have to go through whatever property means, but if it's a junk car, if you get your warrant, you can demonstrate that it works and then it's called Phil and it's gone. You know, Tim was saying to me, in Troy, it's unregistered, it's gone. I don't think we're looking for that.
I, I think the difference here is you're gonna be entering people's private property that they occupy and Phil will run right into a situation.
Rather than going out and taking him off the street.
Or taking off, property's been banned, I mean, you're gonna.
Do you have, do you wanna?
No, I'm, he lets us do it, so.
I mean, how, how do you wheel in someone's yard and hook up their car and take it without telling them? They might have just bought it, they might be getting it fixed.
No, we're telling them, they're putting a notice, so then if it's an issue.
I'm saying if it's unregistered, it's gone.
Yeah, no, and, and that's what we didn't wanna do, like they do in Troy. If it's unregistered, that's, that's insane.
Do they even get a warning in Troy? Does somebody get?
No.
No, they don't, and then they get sued. I represent Troy twos.
Wow. Wow.
Yeah, we're not looking at that. There's our answer.
I did email out too that there was, because municipalities have these big orange or yellow stickers they put on the windshield. We have a thirty, we have thirty days to remove this car.
We talked about doing something similar by tagging.
We can put a notice on the vehicle itself, uh, and then it has so much time, but they have an, they have the ability to remedy it also by demo. by demonstrating that the car in fact does operate.
But that goes back on what Doug's saying, how do you, how, how do you enter someone's property?
How do they do a sticker on their car?
It's the same, you're still entering somebody's property, there's a code violation in terms of, right?
Yeah.
Well, because by law, I am given the authority.
That's what I'm saying, we have our local law that gives the authority, so.
That's, that's what I'm asking you.
So situationally, and, and if it's given a heads up ahead of time via letter that this is going to happen, I mean, it's, it would be good for police to know in case something does come up, but you know, if it does, here's the law, here's the notice.
It's not gonna go in somebody's property, I'm watching where police are.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I may call him and ask, cause he does a lot of this, like-
Yeah, he probably knows exactly what I'm saying.
He probably knows, I guarantee Phil knows all, every rule, I take two steps on, I wait thirty seconds, then I yell and roll, I don't know.
So I used to, I used to, to repossess cars every once in a while and you literally have to, to knock on the door and ask them for the keys of the car and ask them permission to, to enter the property. And if they tell you no, then you don't do it, unless you get, you know.
Well, you're a private, you're a private entity, as opposed to a government.
Right, interesting.
So, but my original question, then, who do they call?
And this comes back to what my larger point was, it may be time as we are preparing our, our budget for April to consider, uh, an additional part-time part of our code enforcement department, we had Marie, that's how we ended up with Marie as clerk, is we hired her. So there are possibilities there that we can discuss, not at hour three of the meeting, but, but I am just sort of planting that seed.
And there will be some revenue generated to help pay for that.
Correct, right.
Alright, um, are we, are we okay to move on? Okay, uh, we have the Historic Preservation Commission and we actually have this resolution ready to go tonight, which would be all the appointments, which is fantastic, so thank you Elena for doing this at the last minute and Megan did a gr, a bunch of heavy lifting on this to get this to happen. So we have for you tonight a resolution appointing members to the Historic Preservation Commission and designating a chair, and by the way, we did this as per the resolution, was it a local law resolution that set this up?
Set this right in their local law section of twenty twenty three.
Perfect, so we followed that to make sure we did this right, uh, so there's a way as, and therefore be resolved that the village board of trustees of the village of Huzik Falls is hereby appoint the following individuals to serve as volunteers on the Historic Preservation Commission for the village of Huzik Falls for the terms set forth. Megan Albert, Mary Ann Zwickelbauer, Aaron Bezinski, Jason Fun Guinness, Eric Whitting, Patty Austin, and actually, the local law referred to the town historian as, as, or delegate to be involved. So when Megan reached out to Rick, he was all about it, so he is also gonna be on this as well. Uh, the commission has to be at minimum five, so you can have more if other people are interested, and the terms have to be staggered. So based on conversations, I know, uh, Aaron and Rick and Eric were really, really excited about this and convert, uh, said that to, um, Megan, so that's why their appointment goes through twenty twenty seven. Mary Ann and Megan are through twenty twenty six, Jason, who actually said he only wanted to do two years, is through twenty twenty five and so is Patty, and they can re-up it as well.
So you don't have to be a village resident to be on the board?
What's that?
You don't have to be a village resident?
I don't think so.
We didn't require it.
No, yeah, um-
So what, what, what does they actually do?
Wait, in a resolution?
What's that?
It's right in the local, in local law section of twenty twenty three.
So like, say Stewart's is building, a building next to historic home on, on Church Street, do they review stuff like that?
They can and give recommendations, they have no authority to make any decisions, so it's an advisory body, it also may be aggressive in seeking preservation grants, which is really what Megan wants to do.
Yes, yes.
Go out there, but we're not, we're not giving them any authority to stop it, they can comment and make recommendations.
Who is Eric, where, anybody know?
I think he's a, I think he's a, I think we had to have an architect or something on the commission.
Oh, yeah, he moved, moved here recently, I think.
I, I'm just asking, I don't know.
No, um, Megan, I know Aaron as well, known, vouched for him, said good stuff, so.
Didn't, so did that happen, I don't know, when they built the Stewart's next to the stone schoolhouse, they had to have, that was like a nightmare, I remember.
What, Doug Stewart's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was like a huge nightmare, because that stone schoolhouse was right there in the property.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, and then, and, uh, and be it further resolved, the village board of trustees does hereby designate Megan Albert as the chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, and we actually have this through the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, so that will include now up through the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. It's a one-year appointment as per the local law that gets reappointed, yes, and then at the organizational meetings, that will be added on to the list. So you can sign off with the resolution? Thank you, and second?
Second.
Thank you, that's Dan and Doug, further discussion, roll call vote please.
Um, trustee Otter?
Yep.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Sheddick?
Yes.
Trustee Warred is absent, um, trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor Robert Allen?
Yes.
Sorry, and deputy, uh, mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, there are only two other things that I, I think we have to do tonight, one of them was not on the agenda, but let me just zip through this and check. This is the first one, this is the, um, uh, we have a resolution approving the intermunicipal agreement, uh, with the town of Huzik concerning assessor duties, this is kind of re-upping one that we already have going, and the town just did this up through twenty twenty five, correct?
Yes.
Alright, so we have it written the same way here, uh, this is basically extending the, uh, I'll just read it, now therefore be resolved by the board of trustees, village falls in regular session, duty convenes follows one, the board of trustees, village of Huzik Falls hereby approve the renewal of said intermunicipal agreement, a true and accurate copy of which is attached to your two for the term of January one, twenty twenty fourth through December first, uh, thirty first, rather, twenty twenty five, this is the assessor duties, this is the, the town assessor taking the village's assessor.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, looking for a second? Any other questions on this?
It was a last minute push to try and get more money, but.
What's that?
It was a last minute push to try and get more money.
From the village?
Yeah.
Oh.
So, but I said, no, we'd already, we'd already had agreement and-
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
We'll trade you for, uh, recycling fees.
Alright, um, roll call vote please.
Yep, um, so, uh, trustee Sheddick?
Yay.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Otter?
Yes.
Trustee Warred is absent, trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And mayor Robert Allen.
Yes, that's fine, alright, great, um, the last, uh, let's see here, um, we did the Huzik Falls Police Department stuff. We, uh, the Urswala one, I had on the agenda that this was a resolution extending the service agreement, I was completely incorrect on that, um, so, no, that's alright. So, so what I'm looking for now is a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a one-year co, extension contract for trash and recycling with the county waste and recycling.
This is for pickup.
Retroactive to September first, when we should have done it and forgotten about it.
Didn't we do, didn't we?
We did the other one, this one we have.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
One second.
Alright, second, I'm trying to find, I'll, then you, you guys have it here, um, any further discussion on this motion? Yes?
I just wanted, I don't know, I'm sure Doug was aware, um, the county waste has a contract back again for the transportation. They, they outbid TAM by like thirty dollars, so we're dealing with county waste to get the transport stations.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing, you're?
It's fine, it's just, I mean, we've had TAM, they've done a lot of work on our, on our compactor lately, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
If county waste is willing to offer that same service, TAM sent a mechanic down to work on the compactor several times.
Outside of our contract, there's extra pay?
No, that, well, yeah, yeah, that was outside of the contract, you know, but the compactor wasn't working, and TAM had the contract to pull it up, so-
Was by accident.
So Patty Bay says we're gonna do it, hire somebody else here for that.
Yes, that's what, I don't know, I'd like to keep TAM doing it, they've been working on it for the last year, two years. So, you know, even though county waste has a contract, but I don't know if TAM would be willing to come down and, and continue to maintain that for us. But it's worth a shot, I guess, I think, because they've done really well with it.
Alright, so we have a motion, um, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions? Carries? Here you go, and I had, uh, we did the agreement for Dan's hauling. I had, there's no executive session, I had one more thing I wanted to bring up just as a discussion point, superintendent Pat Daly reached out to myself and the town supervisor about the possibility of having a shared P R slash website person. It's not enough for the school to be able to fully salary one person to handle all the P R stuff, all the posts, all the press or whatever, but he thought of having a shared person who could split the cost of a salaried position among the village, the town and the school.
And what would the person do, just the website?
Uh, it would be P R updates, press releases, contact for any sort of press stuff and website updates.
Would that be an employer or an independent contractor from?
Probably an independent contractor.
Except for employer, the school district would be high.
No, it wouldn't, I'd, I'd, I'll have to work out that detail, my question, the idea that he, I think that he threw out was kind of an even third split uh, of costs, so if it was say a sixty thousand dollar salary for a full year, there'd be twenty thousand for the village, the town and the school. I don't know if, I don't know if I support that distribution, but I know that we have so much website updating to do that in a year that would probably be worth it and after that it probably wouldn't be worth it, cause we don't have that many P R things, but it does-
I would think he wants that employee, cause if he was gonna contract it out, you could contract out, I mean, with these places as little or as much.
I'd be concerned by employee, cause-
I can find that out.
Any employees in the shared service arena, their first obligation is to their employer, as opposed to you have a car.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one who's on the check.
Yeah, yeah.
So are you interested in pursuing this as a possibility?
Yes, yes.
As a possibility, yes.
Okay, okay.
But I think the split should be a little, school should be, probably be using the service more than the town or the village, what?
Seventy fifteen fifteen.
I like that.
Then they could be an employer.
Well, but really, the school is a massive employer, a massive enterprise compared to the village.
Yes, yeah, okay, alright, I will pass it on and I'll, I'll start working on some more details, do you guys have anything else for the agenda?
Motion adjourned.
Aye.
Thank you, uh, second?
Yay.
All in favor?
Yay.
Opposed or abstentions?
Yay.
We are officially adjourned at nine oh six P M, oh, we just got over three hours, Bobby and Dan to, um, adjourn.
At nine oh six?
Nine oh six P M.